All right. Good evening. We have just returned from an executive session in which we discussed matters covered under exception three of the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, which is to discuss issues related to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. The discussions pertain to the Medfield Teachers Association Units A and B and the AFL-CIO Custodians Cafeteria Workers and Secretaries Units. So at this time, we will now open the hearing for the Medfield Public Schools Fiscal Year 2022 Annual Budget, beginning with a roll call vote. Just to let you know, this hearing will be recorded and posted to the Medfield TV YouTube Channel as well as to the district website. In addition, we will continue to take comments on the budget via the Google Doc through February 5th. The link to that was in the email that the school committee sent out to parents yesterday, and we will also post that on our website under Budget Information. So with that, may I have a roll call vote to open the public hearing? Leo Brown?
Hi.
All right, Tim Knight? I need more sound from you.
Here I am.
Thank you. Megan Glenn?
I.
Anne Mae O'Shea Brook?
Here.
And Jessica Riley?
I.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to hand the floor over to Dr. Marston. Up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome to our FY22 Budget Hearing. Good to have folks participating. I see the numbers at forty-five. That's great. I remember last year we only had a few, so that's we typically have this meeting in the auditorium at the high school. But as you know, with COVID and circumstances this year. So, Michael, can you share your screen? We'll do a short presentation and then have time for questions after.
Jeff, can you see it?
I can. Thank you. So this will be the FY22 Public Hearing Presentation. We'll go through multiple slides, and as we always do in our slides, we try to highlight happenings in the district. You see on the on the cover of that of that first slide, which is one of our classrooms that we put kindergarten classroom in the cafeteria at Memorial. We've worked real hard on that the last few weeks, and kids are having a really good time and great to be have have all those kids back, not in a cohort model, but back in full in person. So that's great. We have a good picture of our teachers from Medfield Day a couple of years ago in the middle, and then students working on the right-hand side. Okay, Michael? So just some background information that we typically go through during this process. So the superintendent is a budget officer, and the law states three general areas of responsibility for the superintendent as budget officer will be budget preparation, budget presentation, and budget administration. So tonight's budget's often called the superintendent's recommended budget because there's no official FY22 budget until the Medfield School Committee votes this evening. The budget voted on this evening becomes the budget that we submit to the town, but it's not necessarily the final budget. As you'll see, that we'll have meetings throughout the spring in which we try to come to an agreement with the town prior to town meeting on May 3rd. Changes can still be made after the school committee votes on the budget tonight, so this isn't the the last time that the number will be up there. So some important budget terms we go through that you'll hear through the presentation. First one is Chapter 70 Funds. So those are the state funds that are earmarked for education. Typically, Medfield does not get a lot, and when I say not a lot, usually between is around $6 million or so, 6.3 million, which comparison to other districts even around us is not very much. So what that means is most of the school budget is is based on a local task tax base. So we don't get a lot of state aid there. Circuit Breaker of the State Reimbursements for Special Education. So each year we submit Circuit Breaker information, which is they they have a different threshold each year. If you spend above that threshold, you can get a percentage back in reimbursement. We get to carry those funds over for two years, but they help us offset our special education cost. Collective Bargaining Agreements, CBA. So we have contracts with our teachers, custodians, secretaries, cafeteria workers, and then part of the teacher's contract is also our teacher assistance as well. So that's a Unit A and a Unit B as well. You'll hear about steps, lanes, a percent of increase. That's the pay structure in the CBA. So a step is a yearly increase in the salary grid. Lanes are based on a degree attainment or taking classes. So that's a horizontal movement on the pay scale. And then the percent increase is what you typically hear, you know, 1%, 2%, whatever. That's the amount that's added to the base. So full-time equivalent, also called FTEs, that's a full-time employee or a fraction of a full-time employee. If you see a .5 FTE, that means it's a half-time employee. A Level Service Budget, same people, same programs. Essentially, what you're going to you're going to see tonight, aside from one position that's been added into the budget, this is a level service budget from this previous year. In FY21, remember, we had numerous cuts to the budget, cuts to our supplies, cuts to our staffing. So what we're we're carrying over in the level service budget is the same people and programs. The last one is capital budget, and that's separate from this operating budget. You will not see much on the capital budget in this presentation tonight. That's a separate committee that Michael represents the school department on. They meet every couple of weeks with other town officials, and they look at those capital items, typically those large purchases that last five years or longer. So here's the breakdown and kind of the agenda what we'll go through tonight. Talk about our mission statement. Again, we try to frame everything we do around what we what we're here for, what our mission is. Go through some of the budget process and the assumptions that we made. Take a little reflection back on where we have been. It's kind of nice to see what what work has been done by the district and the school committees over the years to kind of see where we are and get to this point. Our budget priorities, our drivers, the funding sources, the breakdown and summary, what the increase breakdown is, and then what the steps are moving forward. So our mission statement, as I said before, it's really important for us to frame the work that we do every day. And if we're going to be asking for a large sum of money, it's important for us to look at, you know, what we do as a district and what our mission is. So you know, our mission is to create a dynamic and collegial learning environment. Curriculum instruction will guide students to achieve at high standards and meet the challenges of change. Through school, family, and community partnerships, students will be prepared to become responsible, sensitive, contributing citizens, and lifelong learners. So our process to date, very similar to what we've done in the past. The leadership team establishes those priorities for their own school in the district, and the principals and department chairs develop their budgets. So that usually takes place, you know, right around October, late October, early November. And then Michael and I meet with the principals and department chairs and review their requests. So we have individual meetings with each department chair and each principal and go over what they're looking for in terms of their budget, what their needs are. And we try to approach this as a zero-based budget. So we're not saying this is what you have in your budget, and we're just going to add a percentage to it. We ask them to build it up from from zero to really tell us what they need in terms of their program or their school. The Board of Selectmen and Warrant Committee held a meeting for department heads, and they communicate those FY22 expectations. Leadership team and I met and reviewed the request and input. Mike and I developed the FY22 initial budget, and we presented that to the school committee in late December and made changes based on their input. And then we had our initial meeting with the warrant committee, and we're scheduled to meet in the beginning of February, again, with the warrant committee when we present our entire budget to them. So some of the assumptions that we made developing this budget, the most important one, I think, is that we're back full in person. So when you look at what we have staffing right now, we've hired additional positions. I know we've talked about this in other meetings. We've hired additional positions just to get us through the hybrid model. So additional staffing, additional teacher assistance, those kinds of things. Those folks are not included in this budget. We are making the assumption that we'll be back full in person starting in September. Our federal entitlement grants will be level funded. Sometimes that's not a great assumption because we've seen them cut in years past. So we're going to make that assumption. They're going to be level funded. Chapter 70 will be level funded. The governor's numbers came out yesterday, and they were a lot lower than than all of us had anticipated. So the the process is the governor comes out with a budget. The House comes out with one, the Senate comes out with one, and then it's somewhere in the middle is where where it ends up. Governor's budget usually is the lowest, typically is the lowest, and it only gave us $30 additional money per student. So it's about $72,000 increase for Chapter 70 over last year. And just put that in perspective. When we look back at some of the the data around what Medfield got for for Chapter 70 money, there were years and years and years where the the increase of Chapter 70, year to year, would be $600,000 or $700,000. So think about the fact that all those years, and actually, Medfield was doing overrides in those years, too. So they're getting $600,000 additional Chapter 70 plus doing overrides. There was one period of time where I think it was either five or or six years out of seven years, there were overrides in town. Operational overrides, not debt exclusion for buildings. And and now what's happening is we're getting minimal increase from the state. So now more goes back on the local budget. More goes back on the local tax base, and that's what's creating problems in our town. It has been for the last, you know, four or five years where the state money really hasn't come through, and the state really hasn't held out their end of the bargain. And that's really based on community wealth. So they they have the formula that they use, and they base it on community wealth in terms of real estate, W-2 numbers, and see what what they think the community can afford. And unfortunately, it's more on on the local taxpayer and less on the state aid. So you know, that's going to be an issue we're going to have to deal with for for many years to come. We're going to continue with our tuition-based programs, preschool, kindergarten. And that Circuit Breaker, what I discussed a couple of slides before, will be funded at 70%. Now, Circuit Breaker by law should be funded at 75%, 72%. I've seen as low as 42% as a superintendent. So we're hoping that it's at least 70% or close to fully funded because it's a really important source of money for us. So let's take a look at kind of where we've been and, you know, some of the things that the school committee and the community have supported over the last few years to really, you know, get us where we are today. So we completed our strategic plan, Medfield 2021. We did that five years ago, and and now we're looking at doing a new strategic plan in the spring of 2022. We implemented full-day kindergarten. Those of you that have been around know that there was a time there was no full-day kindergarten here, and that was a really important thing when I first got here that folks wanted to to implement. And we were one of the few towns at that time that didn't have full-day kindergarten. One of the things that we also did was expand our elementary school day. One of the, I guess, a lot of feedback I got was that there wasn't enough time in the school day to accomplish what what teachers need to do, what students need to do, and we extended that day a few years ago for elementary school, which provided longer times for specialists with our kids, but also we added that additional before-school recess, which is, you know, that's been a great success for us, having kids have that time before school. We moved from a three-tier bus route to a two-tier bus route. So there was a time where there was a bus route for middle school, high school, and then another one for Dale and Memorial. And then the Wheelock School started 45 minutes after Dale and Memorial. And as you can imagine, we only we would have all of our buses out doing the routes, and when it only picked up one school, there'd be some buses that would have four, five, six kids on it. So we really tried to take a look at that and drop that to a two-tier bus route like we have while we had before COVID, and we'll hopefully get back to in September. But you know, certainly a savings of time there and adjusted the times for our kids in in class as well. We added Chromebooks for all grade 11 and 12, and then we started this year with grade six, and we expanded the Chromebooks K to 12 so that there are classroom sets that that folks can have, and that right now we have over 300 Chromebooks in the community right now supporting remote learning. We started that in March when when folks needed that, and we continued that over the summer and into the fall. So we have lots of machines out there helping kids out and helping families out. We implemented the RISE program in grades nine through 12 and hired a director of social emotional learning. And the RISE program is is really got great reviews. If you don't know anything about it, it's a program that kids can go to within our high school. Yeah, if they're returning from a hospitalization, whether it be broken leg, broken arm, or mental health issues, it's really a great a great program and a great resource for our kids. We created that SEL Task Force, which has really made some important changes like the homework policy and 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 really was the leader behind getting the the high school, the high school administration and the SEL Task Force group to change that high school schedule, which will implement implement next year. Expanded the counseling staff elementary schools, which was really important. We didn't have any counseling at that level, and we really expanded that well a lot because we know that our kids need that support. So that's been really, really positive as well. The homework policy, again, we implemented that, and that came out of the task force. Again, with SEL in mind, welcome Franklin, our therapy dog at Wheelock. I know that Franklin is is there in our hybrid model and is having a good time wagging his tail for kids, and that's always a great sign to see him. We partnered with Beginning Years for On-Site Staff Daycare, partnered with the Mass, the Medfield Police Department to create the School Resource Officer, became a challenge-success district with Blake in the in the high school, restructured our special education administrative support twice. We did it once, and it still wasn't what we needed to do, and Mary did it again last year, and it's been really positive. Collaborated with our school groups for the Medfield Talk Series, implemented numerous security upgrades, completed the new turf field and track track project, completed a new boiler project with MSBA at Wheelock, accepted into the MSBA program for the new Dale Street School. We've moved forward in the feasibility. You know, Dale Street twice prior was not accepted by MSBA, so it was great to finally get into that program. You know, we established and hired the Director of Instruction Innovation, Town School Facilities Director, expanded wellness to all four years at at the Medfield High School so that before kids were only doing that twice a year, and we felt twice twice out of the four years, and we felt that, you know, it was really important in terms of what we've looked at with social emotional learning, that that kids should have that outlet all four years, and it made sense for us. Implemented that study pilot option for 11th and 12th. Project-based classroom pilot at Dale Street was scheduled to happen this year, but it was delayed, and we hope to do that next year, which we had a fourth grade and a fifth grade classroom that was going to be really centered around our project-based learning. Created a Civil Rights Self-Evaluation Committee. And again, we're really getting into the diversity, equity, inclusion issues, and and we have a long ways to go, but it's really a priority for our district. Ongoing professional development around that with cultural proficiency, active anti-racist, Medfield Educators for Racial Justice. We also DESI Early Adopters for the IEP Improvement Process, so that's a really important piece around inclusion and equity. And then Medfield High School and Dale Street were recognized by DESI for academic excellence over the last few years. So those are just some things that we could look at in terms of where we've been and, again, frame more of the conversation around our budget to to see the support that the school committee and this community has done for some of these programs. So we really appreciate that. So we talked a little bit about Medfield 2021 in terms of the our strategic plan as we come near the end of that. But there are many tenants of that that have direct implications to our FY22 budget. Our goal number one was to be committed to the collaborative learning culture, continuous improvement for students and staff. So we think it's important that we maintain our current staffing, continue that commitment to professional development, and maintain, expand technologies and infrastructure. I think that's more than ever. We need that now. Goal number two is that commitment to supporting and developing the health and social well-being of all of our students. So maintain our current staffing, but also wellness and rise is is a real important key factor of being committed to that social emotional well-being of our kids, and then promote and support the collaboration with outside agencies. So that's been something that we've done each year, and we continue to do that. As you know, we we added Interface as something that we we had collaborated with the police department a few years ago to do that. And that's been a really a positive thing for our community. Goal number three is committed to developing the whole child, and I think maintaining our special education staffing is really important in enhancing opportunities for students outside the classroom, making sure that we can continue to provide opportunities for kids to really show their and showcase their talents outside the classroom is really important to us. Committed to contributing to a vibrant community by fostering a collaborative, community, and consistent education for all students. And we've talked about this in years past, that we really wanted to make sure there was an appropriate allocation across all all districts, excuse me, all schools and departments, because that wasn't the case for a while. We wanted to make sure that that was something we wanted to do. So that's a key point in this. And then, of course, number five with the facilities, continue those investments. Maintain the Director of Facilities position, which is an important one that we share with the town. Amy Collin does an outstanding job for us. Resource allocation for buildings, technology, infrastructure upgrades, which, you know, we're spending an awful lot on that the last three weeks. And then complete the feasibility phase for Dale Street, which we're in really good shape for that right now. Probably my favorite picture on the right there of this presentation. Some of our budget drivers that we have this year, very similar to most school districts in the state. Your instructional and personnel costs, your CBA agreements and contracts, you know, 80% of our budget is is salaries and people. So that's that's our business. We're a people business, and that's where our money is spent. Transportation, we are in year one of a new contract. If you remember, when last time we were in year one, our contract went up thousands of dollars. That is not the case this year. It only went up $700. But as you'll see, as we get into the presentation, we spend, still spend $1.4 million on transportation for for our general transportation, the big yellow buses. So that's important to know how much we spend on that. Our special education transportation, we still do with Except Collaborative this year. I know Mary has worked with Milis, and we tried to do a partnership with them, and we save some some money there doing some of that. And we'll continue to look at at saving money with our special education transportation because we do have options with that. It's not as fixed as our big yellow buses that we have that we use. In special education, again, these are all similar drivers to most districts. Our in-district positions, out-of-district placements, which we've seen a drop this year, which is great in terms of the costs. And then our program development, Mary and her crew developed that great program for our 18-and-over students, and that's been a very successful year one last year and continuing next year. So we're happy about that. Professional development, continue that commitment to our quality of teachers and administrators. And although it doesn't appear in our budget, health insurance costs are always an issue because the town carries the health insurance costs of the school department. And, you know, those have been going up anywhere from 5% to 7% or 8% or whatever each year. So that that's an important thing to remember, even though it doesn't appear on our side of the budget, it still impacts potentially what the town can allocate to the schools. So taking a look at our current FY21 school year and FY21 budget year. So the three components of a school budget, as I mentioned earlier, the Chapter 78, which is 6.2 million in FY21 the current year. And because of a timing issue, there was an issue with when town meeting happened and when the state actually finalized their budget. If you remember through the FY21 process last year, all town departments, including us, were we built our budgets on a 10% decrease in our state aid. And then what happened was later in the in the summer, after we had town meeting, the state released those the money, and it was level funded. So there was 10% of Chapter 70 or six, over $600,000 was not allocated to the schools by the town. Really just a timing issue. We would have had to have had a special town meeting in the fall for that to be allocated, because once your budget is set at town, your annual town meeting, you need another town meeting to opt to change that. So we did not do that as a community, and that is now the 628 is allocated, that was allocated, is in the town coffers and in free cash, which is certified. So I think that's that's just an important point to have, and I know that we've talked with the Warrant Committee and the Board of Selectmen on how we can address that going forward with FY21. Local contribution, again, that's what we talked about earlier, $30 million. And then other grants, fees, and tuitions, $3.4 million. So it's important to know that even though our budget was 36 million, it really costs 40 million to run the district as you saw it. So we we try to offset those costs with the grant tuitions and fees to get us to that number. And then something that's we often forget is that for this year coming up, Medfield is going to be contributing 245,000 to Tri-County Regional and then 59,000 Norfolk Aggie. So that is based on students from Medfield that attend those schools. But again, that's that's all the total cost of education in Medfield isn't just us, it's also those two regional schools as well. So looking at our projected funding amounts and sources that we get outside, which is that 3 million I was just talking about. Obviously, the shutdown in March and COVID has really impacted our ability to raise revenue within our within our school district. So state and federal grants, we were saying that was going to be, we're assuming that's going to be something that is level funded, and we're going to stay with that. The 102 COVID Relief Grant was a grant that we got from the state based on based on the number of pupils, and we were able to get our PPE. We were able to hire the extra nurses and extra custodians all through that money. So that was a source that we had. Our tuitions were down. Certainly, we're down at least 100,000. That's the projection right now. It may end up being closer to 200,000. We're said and done, but you know, we did not charge of tuition, full tuition in March, April, May. And then we we didn't charge full tuition through this hybrid. So that certainly impacts our revenue sources there. The $500,000 of school lunch is federal money, but we we're going to lose about $200,000 there based on what we normally run with our school lunches. Athletics, down about 140, and that's really from not having sports in March, excuse me, in the spring sports season last year, and and then having no gate receipts, none of that in there. So we're down about 140 there. Our receipts that we have, undistributed receipts, down about 140 there as well. So we typically do fairly well with renting out our facilities to use sports on weekends. None of this we can do right now because of COVID. We not charge, we're not charging the students for parking this year. All of those things that go into that account. So we're down about 140 there. The private grants and tuitions and gifts, excuse me, private grants and gifts were down about 30,000, and then we're anticipating Circuit Breaker would be around 471. So you know, we're we're just not in a in a place where we we can expend a lot of money out of revolvers because we we don't have the we don't have the money in that we normally do. But in FY21, this current year, we are funding 44.3 positions outside of the operating budget. So you have our operating budget of 36 million. 44.3 of those positions are funded outside of that through the grants and what you see right here. So that's an important piece to remember, too. It's not all coming out of local and state money, but but certainly revenue generated by the district. So our initial FY22 increase, our approved budget was the 36.8. Our initial FY22 was 38.3 with a change of 1.4 million or an increase of 3.99. And again, that 1.4 is tied almost entirely to increases in salaries. So we'll go through the the summary of each area. So this will be the quick overview, but then we'll break down student services, district services, policy administration, et cetera. So you see that student services, that increased to 1.3%, and as we get down, you'll see exactly why that increases where it is. District Services, the 3.4%, Policy Administration, 9.7%. So Student Services, break that down by our staff, district-wide staff, the 1.1 million. Office Support Staff, tutoring, summer school. Medicaid filing fee is interesting. So we file, we can generate funds as a school district through Medicaid, and we do that through an outside vendor, and then that money goes directly to the town. So it was extremely lucrative years ago, but they've really cut way back on on Medicaid. So I think if we probably generate, you know, 30, 40, or $50,000 a year, we're doing really well. So they've really changed the rules around that. So that might be something that would go down even lower in the future based on on what we're seeing for for Medicaid reimbursements. Special Education Transportation is the 505, and then out-of-district tuition, the 1.1 million. So that total is 3.3 million in the Student Services. So District Services, our district-wide staff, our maintenance staff, OT, research and development, teacher retirement, contracted services, contracted services, supplies, materials. This is all done and categorized by what the Department of Education makes us report this. So some people might be looking at this, and say, why would you call, you know, degree change reimbursement on a district service? Why wouldn't that be with teachers? It's it's we have to categorize it the way the Department of Ed makes us do it because we have to report it out that way. So some of these look a little weird, but that change is only 114,000 over this this previous year or 3.4%. So Policy Administration. So the big change there is the General Reserve, the $95,000. So that $95,000 is what is distributed to non-union staff in the entire district. So that was cut last year to zero. So none of the non-union staff in the in the district got any increase last year. So that's why you see that increase of 9.7, my 9.7, because that is back in the budget this year. Hopefully, it stays in there for the the many non-union staff, 20-something that that did not get increased or more than 20-something. It didn't get an increase. Our legal fees, you know, we're keeping that at the 55,000. We made an increase in that last year, but we have negotiations coming up with teachers next spring. So it's our expectation or anticipation that we're going to need additional funds there. So that's why we kept it at the 55,000. Our membership with Tech and Accept, that Um, our membership with tech and accept, that is our, our collaborators that we work with. Um, and textbooks, which is another one of those, why is that there? Uh, because whenever there's a textbook adoption as a district, uh, that needs to be a school committee approved adoption. So that's why it falls into the policy administration. So that is an increase of one forty four or nine point seven percent. So looking at the summaries for the elementary schools and, and when you look at the percent change, it, it's really based on staffing. So there's no changes in any of the non-personnel in any of these. This is just based on increases to the staff that work at Memorial Wheelock in Dale. And that's where it comes out to. So whether it's a, a lane change where someone's moving horizontally because they got their masters or masters plus thirty, uh, credits or whatever that is, um, that's, that makes the horizontal movement. Or if they're still in years one through say ten or twelve and they're moving up on the steps, that could be a step there too. So that, all that is, is, is not saying that everyone at Memorial School is getting a four point three percent increase. That's not the case. It's really based on where people fall within the salary grid and what their movement is going to be next year. So you'll see four point three, three and three. Um, pretty consistent, obviously with Dale and Wheelock, but not much of a change, um, with Memorial at four point three percent. You'll see very similar now at the middle school, high school. So the reason why the middle school is at five point one percent is because that's where the additional position, which is a school adjustment counselor. We put it in the, in the middle school. Now, it could be in the high school, but we thought it would be in the middle school and our current school adjustment council would work with just the high school, but that's a decision that the principals and, and guidance will make, but we had to put it into one of those two schools for placeholders. That's why you see the increase, um, is that, is that five point one percent. But you can see how much more expensive it is to run a middle school and a high school, um, just on the request numbers because they're much larger, more students, more staff, et cetera. So total budget, um, is, is the thirty eight three or an increase of one point four million or three point nine nine percent. So those of you who've seen this presentation, uh, in the past, when I've done this, uh, typically this slide has a whole laundry list of great things that, that the, the increase does and what, what it accomplishes. Um, not so much this year, it just maintains our current staff, adds that one position I just spoke about. Um, it does shift fifty five thousand of our capital budget to operational. So, um, last year, uh, during the capital budget meetings, uh, we were told to put Chromebooks and other supplies like that into capital. We'd never done that before. Um, this year it's going to be moved out of capital. So we just need to, we need to square that away. We, we have a warrant committee meeting coming up, which we'll talk about that. But we did shift that fifty five out of capital and put it into the operational since the initial budget. Includes the steps and lanes that I talked about. Remember step is the yearly, um, increase on the salary grid, lanes is going horizontal. Uh, teachers get longevity bonuses as well for, um, different, uh, different signposts throughout their career. And then the, the increases, which would be the percent increase to units A and B, A being the teachers and B being the teacher assistants. It funds all the other CBAs for secretaries, custodians and food services. It level funds our non-personnel lines and it's just an important piece to remember that all these non-personnel lines reduced, all of them were reduced in FY twenty one, um, and funds our next strategic plan, which would be in the spring of twenty two. So, when you have a, a level funding of, of your non-personnel, after you've made that cut, it's like getting, getting hit twice on that, in that area. So that's something that we need to consider going forward. Um, this is just a, a pie graph showing the, the request, uh, by school, which we just talked about, but just a, a, a pie graph version of that. And this gives you the breakdown of FY twenty two. So teachers, steps, lanes, increase longevity, um, just a little over one million. Uh, the one point oh, uh, middle school adjustment counselor at seventy one thousand, paraprofessionals increases at one forty nine. And then all those other staff, uh, steps and percent increases at one oh five. Um, our tuitions, uh, only increasing, um, thirteen thousand this year, which is really good. So we have some students that, um, are aging out of our district and we have, um, the program that, that Mary and her staff developed for our eighteen to twenty-two year old students, um, is really, i- it's been a great program and also we're not sending students out because they're staying in to be part of that program. The cut of fifteen thousand is last year, we developed that program and had money in there to develop it. We now know exactly what the costs are, so we don't need as much. So we're reducing it by, by fifteen thousand. And then all the services, looking at the supplies and services, the technology at fifty five, and then a reduction in other expenses again. Um, so that fifty five is what we just talked about, that was, wasn't capital, is now being put into the operational budget. So still a long ways to go in this process. It's only January and town meeting is, is May third. Um, so a couple of, we have school committee meetings that are currently scheduled, uh, February eleventh, the March eleventh, April first. You know, typically we add a meeting somewhere in there. So that's why I had the, the currently scheduled piece. Uh, we are scheduled the warrant committee on February eighth. So we'll do our presentation on, on February eighth. And, um, you know, they'll have their opportunity to talk, talk to us about our budget. And then our town meeting, which is going to be outside, I'm told, on May third. And that's when the final budget's established. So we can go through this whole process and all these meetings, but until that budget is voted on, on May third, we don't have a budget. So that, that's kind of what happened in FY twenty one where our town meeting was a lot later and the state hadn't developed their budget. So it was really a timing thing for FY twenty one. Um, and we're hoping that the state is in better shape this year and their timeline is better so that we're not waiting for them, uh, to, to allocate the funds. Again, and we have six million, uh, there are many districts that have a huge percentage of their budget come from the state. So, the last slide, Michael?
That's the last slide.
That's the last one. So Madam Chair, happy to answer any questions. Michael and I will be available for questions, uh, that you have or anyone from the public.
Okay. I, uh, will now open the floor to questions and comments, uh, regarding only the specific matter of this hearing. If you would like to speak, uh, much as you've attended other meetings, uh, simply raise your hand or toggle the raise a hand icon on the screen. And when you're brought over, please announce your name. Um, you'll be given up to three minutes to ask your question or make your comment. And the committee, Dr. Marsden, Mr. Lafrancesca will, uh, do our best to respond. If it's a comment, it will certainly take that input in as well. Um, in addition, as I mentioned before, there is a Google Doc for feedback on the budget that will be open until February fifth. Um, a link was included in the email that all parents received from the committee yesterday and it will be posted on the school committee page of the district website by tomorrow. Uh, you may of course email us at any time at scchair@email dot medfield dot net. So with that, I'm going to bring up my participants and then, uh, see who is raising their hand. If anyone has any questions or comments, I'll give you a few moments. And just remember. All right. The first one I see is Ned Rothstein. Uh, if you'd like to come over Ned. And Michael, can you, uh, turn off your screen sharing? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening Ned.
Uh, I have two quick questions.
Okay.
Um, so, um, what effect will the number of families switching to private schools have on the budget, if any? And my other question is, why aren't the athletic programs, varsity sports, et cetera, uh, pay to play or privately funded? Just thinking back to my high school days where the, the football team actually paid its own way.
Okay. Um, would you like to stay here while we, while we answer that or do you want to?
Sure.
Move on. Okay. All right. Dr. Marsden or Michael?
Thanks for the question Ned. So in terms of, uh, kids that have gone to private school or are homeschool, um, they don't, they no longer count in the October enrollment, which the state uses to, um, to base their chapter seventy on. So, um, we do have a reduction in those. I think it, I don't have it right here. I have it somewhere in my office here. Uh, of the numbers of students that have, new students that have gone to private school. Um, I, I want to say total students in private school was a forty two, but I, I don't want to be quoted on that because I'm not sure. Uh, but they, they just don't count into the, the, uh, the chapter seventy calculation that the state has. So that would be, that would be a, a consequence of it. I think that's one of the things that, uh, was an issue with the, the governor's numbers that came out yesterday is that, I know the superintendent's association and I know the school committee association, um, petitioned the state to ask them to hold districts harmless because the statewide was down over thirty thousand students. So that has an impact across the state with chapter seventy allocations. At least in this first one, Ned, they did not hold us harmless and they took our number from October one. This, the senate or the, or the, the house might do that. It might hold us harmless, we don't know yet. In the, so, the other question was around sports. Uh, we do have athletic fees. Um, so students pay athletic fees in a sliding scale based on their sport, um, to play sports. If they play hockey, it's a lot more expensive. If they're playing football, two twenty five, Michael.
Two twenty five for a regular sport.
So that, so kids are doing that and that's how we lost the, the revenue because we gave, um, all the parents back or we credited them, uh, the money for, for the springtime. So if you're a spring athlete and then you played a fall sport, you didn't have to pay for your fall sport because they gave you the credit from last spring. So that's, that's part of the revenue loss that we had there.
Okay.
All right. Are you, uh, are we, uh, all set Ned? Can I move on?
I believe so.
All right.
Thank you.
I don't actually know if there is an next person, but let's take a look here. Let me pull it over on my screen. Do I have anyone else? Who would like to make a comment? Oh, and I'm not sure I'm seeing my whole screen at this point. So, if you, uh, a comment or have a question answered about our priorities for next year. Okay, Chris McQ Potts, if you would like to come over, Owen, can you bring her over? Hi, Chris.
Everyone.
There you go.
Hi. Um, so I just have a few questions. Um, one sort of a big picture question on the budget. And that has to do with the fact that we have a town financial policy that's been drafted for the town departments. And it was also designed to be, um, include the school department, but school committee has not signed that financial policy. So I'm wondering what the status of that is with relationship to the, the whole budget planning process. Um, so that's one question. The other question I had is my understanding is that with the, um, athletic program, the gate receipts, that kind of revenue and revenue for other sources goes into the revolving, goes into revolving accounts. Um, yet we don't really ever see a full accounting of all the district revolving accounts, um, as well as the student activity accounts and what goes into that and what comes out of that. I think it would be really helpful as part of the budget process for the public to be able to see, um, accounting of those two accounts. Um, I also, um, so I was wondering what the status of that would be. Um, I also think that, um, you know, there's concerns with the additional staff that were hired this year, um, that are not incorporated, they're not reflected into the budget. And so they will be basically, um, not included next year. So there's some concern about what's going to happen to the town and, uh, unemployment, um, budget with regard to, um, uh, to those positions, uh, and what that's going to do to the budget. So I'm just wondering whether anything on the school side is taking that into account, unto the budget. Um, and then lastly, I was wondering how many of our aides from last year, um, continued this year? Um, because I know that there were at least, uh, one or two who could not continue because they could not participate in the cohort. That aides were excluded from that. So I'm wondering how many of our aides from last year did we lose? And if the budget, is the budget affected this year because of, um, of that loss in some way? And then, uh, then I also have one last question and that has to do with, um, the music budget. It seems both music and, uh, I think guidance. Um, there's, you know, the, the, the dollar amount that has been budgeted each year that's placed in the budget compared to the actuals has been consistently underspent for three years in a row. So I'm wondering what's happening to that money. Uh, where is that, where is the additional unspent money going? And, um, why is that the case? And I, I noticed that in particular, um, the, the number keeps going up, the budget number keeps going up, but yet the budget is under, is underspent. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And very efficiently, three minutes. Excellent.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to, I may have to ask Chris to repeat a couple of those, but I'll start with the last one first, I guess. So, um, you know, as I said earlier in the presentation, we do a zero-based budget. So we develop the budgets based on what people are asking and that's what we put in the budget, what they, they, they say they need for their program. So last year in FY twenty, we returned one hundred and forty seven thousand dollars to the town. So I guess, I guess that might be your answer, what happens with the unspent money? Um, what was the other stuff? I don't know the other questions, Chris.
You know, actually I can go, I can go through them.
Okay.
The first question that, uh, Chris had was that she wanted to know big picture, why, um, that they are, she wanted to know big picture that the town has a financial policy and she wanted to know why the school committee has not signed off on this financial policy. Um, and I remember, uh, at some point, uh, the debate around that, or even if it was a debate, I think in the end it was just seen as some, you know, that the town has a financial policy. And so, as a member of the town, we, uh, work within the policy. However, I cannot fully account for that. So, because it was so very long ago. Um, the second one was, uh, Chris is concerned that she does not see a full accounting of the student activity accounts and the gate receipts and how those are broken down or the, uh, so Chris, and feel free to pipe in if I'm not getting all of this parts of the, the, uh,
Yes. So, so there's two, there's additional, we, we have additional accounts. We have revolving accounts and we also have student activity accounts in addition to budget sheets that, that were published, but we never get a chance to actually see, I think, the revolving accounts or the student activity accounts to see what is, how much is in those, either, both of those accounts and how that money is used. And that really needs to be looked at.
Okay, wait, hold on, hold on. So that was your question.
So I would say that, yeah, during, during the presentation, we had that slide where we had all the losses. That's, that's all the revolving accounts. So that's, I mean, that's the projected losses are right there.
So what Chris is saying, I think, is that she wants to know, uh, in that revenue, where is the breakdown around, you know, is it ten thousand dollars for gate receipts? Is this correct, Chris, that you're saying?
I like to see, I want to see, would like to see balances of what, what is in, what is existing and that the revolving accounts and also the student activity accounts.
Student activity accounts are done in the build by building. So, um, we'll have to, that's, that's building based.
Okay. And the next question.
There isn't a question there. It's just that you'd like to see that. Is that, it's one of them.
I think it's important. I think it is important as part of the financial, the budgeting, financial picture each year to see the revolving accounts and the student activity accounts, what goes in and what comes out each year.
Gotcha. Comment received. Thank you. Um, you were concerned that the one-year, uh, hires that we had would, uh, be, um, not, that the town would not have accounted or we would not have accounted for the unemployment costs of that. I think Dr. Marsden can speak to that. The one, the temporary hires that we did.
Yeah, I guess, you know, we, we work with the town on that. I guess my, my concern wouldn't be those folks. My concern would be the fact that, uh, we're asking for almost a four percent increase and the town wants us at one percent. In that when most of our budget is, is, uh, actual salaries, I'm more concerned of our existing folks that have been here a while that, that may not be here based on what the town is looking for. So we work with the town on, on all the unemployment and, um, you know, we, we haven't got to that point yet because we haven't started, you know, those conversations with the town and where they're at. So we, we do that every year, Chris.
I just want to add to that. So the town has been charging unemployment, um, to the CARES Act for this year. And it looks like there will be some type of stimulus package next year that they might be able to do the same thing. Those are not conversations that we've had yet with the warrant committee, but that's the, um, that's the model they're using currently.
Okay. The next one is, uh, Chris would like to know how many aides were lost because they could not, or how many aides were lost. And then, uh, she made a comment, which I understand around the fact that they could not access cohort C um, as aides. And if I remember correctly, that was very much a issue around the reciprocal agreements that we had with other school districts who were also not taking, uh, or allowing aides to access the cohort C and that we had worked out a reciprocal agreement with other districts so that, uh, teachers could remain, but it seems as though aides were not part of that agreement with multiple other districts. Is that correct, Dr. Marsden?
Yeah. So we, we allowed, uh, teaching assistants who were Medfield residents to have their kids in cohort C, but not teaching.
Within Medfield. So. Within Medfield, so Medfield residents, Medfield teaching assistants, but not if you were outside of town.
Correct.
Right, right. Uh, and but did we, did we?
So what was the, what was the net-net in terms of the loss of our existing teaching assistance from last year to this year?
It's a gain. We're we're way above.
Yeah, we have more.
Of pre-existing ones. I know we hired, we had a lot of new hires, I'm talking about.
I'm perfectly happy to answer that if we know it, but the
Yeah, I don't know.
It's not actually dealing with the fiscal year twenty-two budget.
Yeah.
So the next question is uh, the music and guidance dollar amounts have been underspent for three years. And I think that you answered that.
Yeah.
So um, those are estimates that the department has come to us with believing that there may be additional expenses and then each year perhaps those expenses haven't been. But we're, they're trying to plan ahead for kind of emergent expenses and then we turn that back to the town? Is that how that works?
Hundred and forty-seven thousand this year, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And we are going to move on. Does anyone have an additional question? Anyone, I'm still waiting. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give us about another minute, because I know sometimes it's hard to kind of generate uh right off the top of your head. But that's also why I I think we felt it was important this year that as you looked at the budget, you could kind of give us continuing information or continuing thoughts around the budget priorities for fiscal year twenty-two. All right, so going once, going twice. And uh, I'm going to close the comments, the question and answer portion of the evening. However, I would like to ask the committee if there are any kind of clarifying questions or comments that they would like to make right now as we're looking at this. Certainly, we will be talking about this a great deal for the next at least. If we're left only up to May third, it could, you know, God forbid, but.
Yeah, I guess the question. Good, Tim. I I guess the question I had is um is on the, I know it's unfortunate subject to start bringing up right away, but has the preliminary uh list of possible cuts been starting to be developed already as a result of this one percent budget?
Yeah, we we started to look at it. We haven't had the conversations with leadership team yet, but we've definitely looked at programs, supplies, materials. Uh, but as we went through last year, you know, that process we went through last year, where we just
Yeah.
Going, you know, bringing back other things to you folks and going back and forth. You can't, you can't get there with paper clips, so it's it's people, unfortunately. So I think that's what we're looking at right now. If, and I do want to add, I know that I didn't put in the presentation, but you know, the town has their their financial bylaws and their what they're what they're going through, but you know, they just certified in the month in in December, three point three million dollars in free cash, which you know, this is year eight for me here, and I don't ever remember seeing it that high before. So three point three million in free cash of which is the one forty-seven that we turned back and also the six twenty-eight of chapter seventy. So I mean, I think that's going to be part of the conversation that we have with the Warren Committee, and I know that they want to have a certain percentage of stabilization and free cash available, but if we're talking about laying off again for year two, this is the second year in a row of laying off, then we need to have that conversation with folks.
My my question was more around, I I think you said the assumption is that we're back and we're open full-time. You know, I imagine we're going to still have increased like operational COVID-related expenses.
Right.
How are we, are we accounting for that and suggesting that there would be stimulus that that may counterbalance? Or how are how are we looking at that?
Yeah, I think we're looking at some of this, and I I want to just be clear about the stimulus. So the first one that just came out that we just got notified today's Thursday, Tuesday, that we get notified, you know, the the zillions and zillions that are coming to school districts. You know, some people think that we're going to be, our budget's going to be okay because of that. Hundred and seventy-two, Michael, tell to us, seventy-seven, seventy-two?
One, one seventy-two.
Yeah, one hundred and seventy-two thousand for Medfield Public Schools. You know, again, you look at Framingham, they're getting, I think, seven million. So I I mean, I think there's it's not a windfall for Medfield. We're not going to turn it down. I mean, I'm happy to have hundred and seventy-two thousand, but you know, this fallacy of this stimulus windfall for Medfield is not, it's just not here. Now, this next round, if if and I've said it a thousand times, I'll say it again. If it comes out like oh eight, no nine in that particular way of of disseminating the funds, then we're going to be in better shape, but they use the Title One mechanism again for this, which gave us the one seventy-two. Uh, so if it's if it's Title One again, for the stimulus that may be coming, we can count on numbers like one seventy-two and not, you know, three, four, five hundred thousand dollars. So yeah, Tim, we're going to probably have to use some of that. It's not going to be a light switch change back to normal. We know we're probably going to have masks next year still. We're still going to have to have, you know, PPE, the the mitigation factors, washing all that's still probably going to be in place. But we'll be back, you know, in person is is my expectation on that, so.
There may not be. I I'm just thinking of replaying last year in the spring as we were, you know, working with the town. You almost have that as at least, you know, I think their CARES Act and the stimulus was up around a million dollars. So let's say we don't get anything. It's reasonable to say we're going to, you know, we're going to need to find that somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, it all depends on what the structure is of the stimulus. If it goes directly to the town and they they need to work with the schools like the CARES Act, that's one thing, but if they we're hoping it goes directly to the schools like it did in oh eight, oh nine, so that we'll be able to use that to offset our budget. But, you know, we'll have to see how it goes.
Yeah.
The one seventy-two that just that we just learned of on Tuesday, did that come to the town or is it stipulated for school?
It's for the schools.
And is that just as the CARES Act was stipulated for COVID-related expenses, or can it be used to address budget?
Sure, we can, we can do, use it. It's it's pretty open. We're um they're actually good, it's going to be in a grant format, so we haven't gotten the money yet. We have to apply for it, do the whole grant piece. They just released the allocation. So once, once they release the grant out application, then we'll get a good sense of what it is, but we met with the commissioner yesterday and it was, it didn't seem like there was going to be a lot of stipulations on those funds, so.
So do you envision it being used to work off deficits of FY twenty-one, or would we put it towards the budget for FY twenty-two?
I think we're probably going to look at, and Michael, I talked about it, something to offset the FY twenty-one if we need to. And we would like to carry it over to FY twenty-two, but based on what we have right now and and not having that six twenty-eight of chapter seventy is putting us in kind of a tough position. So we may need to offset twenty-one. So we, once we hopefully we can carry it over a couple of years, so we got to see what it looks like. And once they give us that information, we'll be able to make that determination. We'll we'll let you know at the committee level whenever the next meeting after we find out what it looks like.
Okay, and um, a- as you described in your presentation that the arrival of the chapter seventy money was sort of a, just due to a timing issue, how it went into the free cash, what is the role now that the school committee, as we move into our discussions with the Warren Committee? Do we develop a warrant to go to to town meeting, or how is it that we how how is it that we acquire the funds that through Michael's presentations at every one of our meetings, it's become increasingly more apparent as the CARES Act money is spent, that we're we're operating operating in a deficit here, and we're going to need some of that money. Is there something procedurally that we need to do?
Yeah, so that would have to be allocated annual town meeting.
Okay.
So whether or not, and I'll I'll meet with Christine on that. I think when we had talked with the Board of Selectmen and the Warren Committee, and it was it was a month or two ago now, I believe it was going to be a warrant to pay unpaid bills for FY twenty-one, and that's how it was going to be allocated to to offset those costs. But we'll have to, I'll have to sit down with Christine and you go over that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, Michael, am I wrong on that? I think that's what we talked about, that.
Yeah, so that what they would like to do is see where we are right before town meeting and do a projection and then take it to the town floor.
It was, isn't there a window at which the warrants close, though?
There is, yes.
So that's, you can always bring it up on town floor, on the on the.
It'll be part, it'll be a warrant, it won't be on time. I have the the date right here. Warrants close on February sixteen.
Yeah, I thought it was way before town meeting, okay.
So that's a conversation we'll have. I I believe it's going to be part of a war, it's not going to be something moved on town meeting floor.
Okay, um, and then I'm confused about what's capital, what's not capital at this point. Do we have any? Is there any school-related item on the capital budget list at this point?
Yeah, we we still do have, I believe, um, I have to go look at it because.
Or one hundred thousand?
For technology.
Yeah, I I some, yeah.
There's, there isn't a mountain there for technology, which has to do with classroom projectors.
Okay.
Should we shouldn't up that a little bit more?
Well, the fifty-five was taken out. Chrome.
Yeah.
Right.
The Chrome, but well, yeah, because I got them this year, too.
So indeed, there is some wiggle, is there maybe some wiggle room to get more back into the capital budget? Is that fair? Right.
Uh, no, I think that they want it, they want the Chromebooks out of the capital budget.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's other capital, too, that, you know, Michael's involved with that, that, you know, the five-year capital plan that talks about, you know, roofs on schools, those kinds of things, and those are all.
Yeah, that was, that was my question, is the the building facility items, are are those still there? Because we have that money set aside through that one million a year, right, the, yeah.
We're we're going to be going into our fourth year of that twenty-year facility plan.
And in terms of revenue, Dr. Marston, uh, I know that Anime is going to be absolutely amazed that I'm bringing this up. But and nobody even planted me, but is this the year that we finally have to think about bus fees? Which virtually every other town and I have fought against because of neatness of how we are set up in terms of schools. But uh, is this the year that we have to think about those? I mean, obviously, we can always think about them. We don't have to institute them, but I I do think that it's important and that we we at least think about them because the idea of not looking for every kind of revenue source that we we can when we're contemplating laying off teachers and potentially in some way having to eliminate a mental health position that we desperately need. And would like to add, I I just feel like we need to have that discussion this year. And and I know that on the inside, all of you are just slack-jawed that I am the one who's saying it, but I'm concerned, obviously.
I think it is the year we have to take that, because that has to be on the table. So.
Yeah.
I don't know.
The the easy night, so to speak. I know it's not easy, but this is the easiest night. You know, going forward, it's just, it's making my stomach churn thinking that we're at nearly four percent now and where the town wants us to be, as Jeff just said, you know, um, it's people. And then when you think about how how desperately we need that adjustment counselor and to think that that might be on, you know, it's just these are hard, hard, hard choices we're going to have to make. I do think we have to have that thoughtful conversation of perhaps instituting a bus fee.
Well, we're going to have to, and and in that, too, there's some, there's going to be the after effects of this the COVID situation that is going to have to be addressed through people, right? The adjustment counselors and school psychologists and those other things that are going to be in there as we transition back to some sort of normal you know, normalcy to dig out and identify the the COVID gap, right? What's our delta of lost learning? Um, and social emotional impact as well, and that takes people to do that. So that that's why I'm saying the priority list of what we're prioritizing, I I think is going to play a large role in this and and busing is just one of those trade-offs, unfortunately.
Andrew, I, you know, actually, I want to, I want to make sure that that if you would like to be brought into the conversation, that you certainly feel free to to kind of pipe up in terms of what you see as important priorities and some of the things that Dr. Marston talked about, but I don't, you know, I don't necessarily want to force you or put you on the spot, but I do want to.
I don't have anything particular to say right now, but I appreciate you. You can start.
One um, aside, I can say, I know we at least saw the the busing contract. If you had fees and and just the way this year is going, so many people are starting to drive kids. We definitely, I would think we would lose some kids. Are we locked in no matter what to certain fees on the bus, or does it, you know, if we if we lost kids, would would our bus fees go down as well?
Are you saying the the bus cost in the contract or bus fees that we're collecting?
Bus, um, the contract, so so that they, our expenses, you know, you kind of think about it, if you had bus fees, it does make you think twice, like right now, so many of us are now driving kids based on COVID, so you might actually have, yeah, you, there are some fees, but would we actually benefit from reduction of expenses?
And we we pay by bus, so that's what the contract is. So if we need to reduce the bus, it would just be with like thirty-seven thousand, Michael, thirty-five, something like that, so we'd reduce it by by that. It's amount per day per bus, so we could reduce it that way if we needed to.
Interesting. So so you might hit on both sides, you know, nobody, I'm sitting as a towns person, I wouldn't want more fees, but on the other hand, you know, we we have to account, I mean, it might, it might be an interesting way, given people, the alternative is people.
And I've had a good one about a, it's the only thing that we tend to disagree on really intensely is the bus fee fees, because we've come, you know, we've talked about it so so very often. Um, and there are some difficulties within our own. I don't want to go too far far into this because this is a hearing and that there isn't, you know, we need to kind of flesh these things out to understand really what the revenue would be around them and what would be practical within our district, but with the kind of two-two-two system we have within the elementary school, it it does make charging bus fees at that age difficult. And I know that we've talked about that. And we are required to bus or within a certain distance, right? No, for that younger age or?
Yeah, we're not required to bus seventh grade through twelve.
Right.
Data six.
Twelve would probably be the the level that we would be uh, looking at, but um again, you know, these things all have to be, this is really just throwing things, throwing, getting at the wall right now.
There's a lot of logistics, too, that will have to be taken into consideration because of the way we do our grade levels.
Right.
So, um, you know.
We talked about before that you could be a parent with a child at Wheelock and a child at Dale or Memorial, and you might pay a bus fee for Wheelock but not Dale Memorial. I mean, that, that's what, that's what, how it's going to shake out. And so what we can do is by the next meeting or or whenever you want, we'll put together some projections and what it will look like.
Right.
And we and we can have that. So whatever you want on the on the agenda, we'll put that together to see what what it's worth and what it looks like. And um, you know, the thing is that if you can try to accumulate that revolving account over a couple of years, then it can really help you with the transportation cost. I think if you expend it all every single year, uh, you'll see minimal impact, but if you're able to to carry that over and and have a a good lump sum that you can offset costs, that would be something that would be worthwhile doing, but.
So.
People listening to, you know, the other, you know, the bus fees, we take other things into consideration, too, of the schools have to, like, free and reduced lunch status and other things like that, and income waivers, yeah. Just so people don't start getting nervous.
Yeah. And it'll take some research around other districts around and what we would think was appropriate for our district and stuff, but the, I mean, again, you know, it would be irresponsible of of any of us not to be thinking about how we can increase revenue in a time in which we are clearly pressed for it and have had far fewer fees that we've had to to charge people over the last year. So.
We should also consider a technology fee, user fee. I mean, I think really that's something we should look at. That's something that everyone um, you know, can look at as far as, especially when we are allocating Chromebooks to a lot of people.
Yeah.
You could start.
Repairs, yeah, the repairs and that kind of stuff to support that and and replacement and upkeep.
And we can think about that. You know, I don't want to think, I don't want to, in a district in which we have almost I'm going to go into my spiel, in which we have almost no commercial tax base. I'm gonna go into my spiel, in which we have almost no commercial tax base and our, uh, our expenses are generally carried by taxpayer household or by, uh, land-owning households, you know, kind of property-owning households. Um, it's difficult to discuss additional fees, uh, but, um, I think it's something that we really do have to, to look at. And it's not that I want to nickel and dime everybody, but you know, it, it has to come from somewhere, and we, we just don't want to lose people. And we will also be getting more students, it's not like we are locked into this strange, strange time, you know, our NESTC uh, population kind of estimates are going up still, and whether we agree with them or not, we will still. Than we did previously at some point, right? So.
Well, that's a question, actually, that's, you know, I know it's not totally budget-related, but, uh, do we have the latest projection, projection for K next year?
Wait, yeah, I think that was at last week.
We do.
Last month.
To.
Yeah.
So it's high, right?
It's high.
It's not little, it is not little.
So that's one caveat to this budget is that if we do see those numbers come to fruition, which we're not sure we are yet, because based on what our outreach, we don't have those, those numbers. If we do see something close to those numbers, we're gonna have to add a position in kindergarten, I mean, we, we tried to do that last year, and then the numbers didn't come to us. Um, and COVID hit, so that has part of it as well, but I think we need to look at that very closely, and we have to watch that as we get closer into the spring, I know that Memorial's doing their outreach now for full-day kindergarten and those kinds of things, and um, if that does come close to that, we, we'll need to really look at that closely. I mean, we have to even, if, if we come to those numbers that they're predicting, we have to look at whether or not we can offer full-day kindergarten as much as we offer it right now, we may have to look at adding a couple of half-day slots in there because we want the space to do it, so. Again, that's, that's a lot of what is, but we need to just have that planned for that, just in case that if we're in, start to look in, uh, you know, in April, and those numbers start to happen, then we need to work with that.
Yeah. Okay, so we are at an hour and fifteen minutes on this hearing right now, so, um, and I do want to get to the regular session. Uh, does anybody else have any comments, uh, in the committee? Or, okay, um, so, uh, I think the next thing is, is that Dr. Marston, you have to ask us to accept your budget as the school committee budget, but I, uh, is that our next step on this particular?
Right, so I would, I would ask you to, um, to vote to accept that as the school committee budget, which we will submit to the town as our, our budget, but of course not our final budget, but our budget, which we're required to do before January thirty-first for the charter. So it asks that you approve that number, and, um, the number should be in the motion. Full number.
Uh, can you, just because I, I'm an elephant with a short memory, can you please give me the number?
I knew you were gonna ask me that.
Thank you.
Michael, you have a party, I have thirty-eight million three, but I have the other two numbers.
Wait, 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 that was really fast, and I am.
Thirty-eight, three, four, eight, two, two, nine. Thank you.
Okay, but somebody has to say it before I'm, after I'm talking, okay, so now, this is ridiculous, but Michael, please give me the number slowly and dealing with my learning differences.
Thirty-eight million.
Thirty-eight million.
Three hundred and forty-eight thousand.
Three hundred and forty-eight thousand.
Two hundred and twenty-nine.
Two hundred and twenty-nine. Thank you, and I do want to make, uh, clear to the people who are here, thank you so much, um, that, uh, the acceptance by the committee does not mean that our input or comments, or that your input or comments will be ignored, or that it is too late to make a difference. The vote to accept this is purely a procedural action.
This will not be the number in May.
This will not be the number in May, we would be pleased. So the next thing that happens after this, uh, vote is that on Monday, February eighth, at seven PM, the warrant committee will review the school committee budget with Dr. Marston uh, and the budget subcommittee, as well as with Mr. Lafrancesca. Um, and that is an open meeting that will be held on Zoom, and we do really encourage your attendance to that, and I think that it's helpful to see how our town kind of processes through these things, it's really, um, if you're a little bit of a municipal geek like me, it's kind of fascinating. Um, and then in addition, we'll continue to give, uh, school committee updates, or the budget committee, and Dr. Marston will give us updates continuously through the next several or few months, and certainly several weeks. Um, and again, I tell you that there is no budget that is finalized until town, annual town meeting, which will be on May third this year. Okay, so, I am now going to make a motion, or, uh, do I hear a motion from the committee to accept the superintendent's proposed budget for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two of thirty-eight million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars as the Medfield School Committee's fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget? Anime, so moved, do I hear a second? All right, Leo toggled first, so second. And, uh, we'll now take a roll call vote. Um, so Leah Brem?
Yes.
And Ma- uh, Megan Glenn, I'm sorry, that's who I see first.
Yes.
Okay, Tim Knight?
Yes.
All right, Anime O'Shea Brook?
Aye.
And Jessica Riley, aye. The motion passes unanimously, and we have accepted the fiscal, the student superintendent's proposed budget uh, as the school committee budget for the, uh, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, which we will then submit to the warrant committee. Um, so what we need to do now is to close the January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one public hearing, and then after we close this, we will move into, uh, the regular session of the school committee meeting. Um, and I'm actually gonna ask you, uh, procedurally, we are required to, we'll do a roll call now to close this, and then we are procedurally required to do a roll call again to uh, call to order at the next meeting, so you'll just hear us saying our names an awful lot for the next, like, two minutes. Okay, so, is there a motion to close the January twenty-seventh, twenty-one, uh, twenty-twenty-one public hearing for the Medfield Public Schools fiscal year twenty-twenty-two annual budget?
January twenty-eighth.
It is the twenty-eighth, sorry, I deeply apologize, you knew that, it was a typo, thank you. So do I hear the motion to close the January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one public hearing for the Medfield Public Schools fiscal year twenty-twenty-two annual budget?
So moved.
Thank you, Megan. Uh, Megan's first, and do I hear a second?
Second, Tim Knight.
Tim Knight, thank you, I'm now going to call for a vote, uh, Leo Brem?
Aye.
Tim Knight? Tim Knight? Tim?
Aye.
Thank you, leave that on, because we're gonna do this again. Um, Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Anime O'Shea Brook?
Aye.
And Jessica Riley. Okay, the public hearing is now closed, and we will now call to order this January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one regular session meeting of the Medfield School Committee, beginning with a roll call, so Leo Brem?
Here.
Thank you, and Tim Knight?
Here.
And, uh, Megan Glenn?
Here.
And Anime O'Shea Brook?
Here.
And Jessica Riley, here, and I don't make the rules, I just enforce them, so, thank you so much. Uh, this meeting is also being recorded and will be posted to the Medfield TV YouTube channel, as well as to the district website. Okay, uh, I make sure that I have my agenda correct here as we move to this part. Okay, uh, the next thing we are going to do is move to the public inputs portion of the meeting for this school committee meeting. Citizens at this time may address the committee on items of school business not on the agenda. The committee will take such items under advisement without action or discussion at this time at the meeting at which the item is then presented. To indicate that you would like to make a comment on an item not currently on the agenda, please click the raise your hand icon on the screen. Uh, and when you are brought over, please announce your name. You will be given up to three minutes to make your statement. And in order to further the efficient process of the district and committee's business, we will hear public comment under this agenda item for, uh, ten minutes. So if you would like to make a comment on, uh, something that is not on tonight's agenda, please, uh, toggle the raise your hand. Ned Rothstein, Owen, can you please bring, uh, Ned over? Ned, fancy meeting you here.
I know, I know, um, so I, I just have a, a, a general question, and this actually goes to Dr. Marsden. Um, I'm actually looking.
Actually, hold on a second, we can take your, your, uh, comment, but we can't necessarily answer questions at this point, we simply take the, the comment about.
So I, I'm, so anybody who's actually been on any of the Concerned Citizens of Medfield's, uh, threads about the, uh, internet, ongoing internet issues at the schools probably knows that I've been actually very vocal in my comments. Um, this is a longstanding issue, um, my son got his first iPad in eighth grade, he is now a college freshman, and the internet service at the schools was marginal at best at that point. Um, I know that there have been some, some hardware issues, and there is probably a, a bandwidth issue, and I know that there have been some, um, some outages that are beyond anybody's control. Um, but I used to work in classroom technology, uh, I'm an audiovisual technician by trade, and, um, lost classroom time due to technological issues never gets made up. Never, ever, ever, ever gets made up. And watching my sophomore daughter struggle in her coursework, um, because, you know, and, uh, look at tomorrow, uh, the whole high school is remote because ongoing internet issues. Um, is there a, a roadmap on how we're going to fix this? And, um, and I would like to see that.
Certainly understand what you're saying, Ned, um, I do know that Dr. Marston intends to talk about the technology uh, during the, uh, learning, the learning progress model, so.
Okay.
Okay, but I understand, and I, we duly note that it is a longstanding.
Absolutely, um, hear your frustration, I, I, I don't know, anyone's more frustrated than I am right now with this. I know when I talk about it during the student learning, um, Owen is gonna be a part of that, too, because he's been working real hard and working with our consultants on that, too, so Owen will, will give his, kind of where we've been the last few weeks and where we're headed right now. Uh, in terms of just looking at tomorrow, there, there's, there was a pretty good chance that, uh, tomorrow would be okay for both the middle school and high school, but um, I didn't want to put the teachers and, and, excuse me, the students and the teachers in another day of frustration, quite frankly, so. Um, it was probably a good chance that, based on what they did today and what Owen has done up until the start of this meeting, uh, that would be fine, based on his conversations with Comcast and our consultants, but, um, I didn't want to take that risk for our, our kids and our teachers, because they're, they're pretty frustrated and they should be.
Sure, and, and unfortunately, my daughter kind of lives for those two days a week when she's actually in school.
Right.
And to lose yet another one of those in-person days, and she also has two, two teachers that are remote all the time.
All right, so I'm gonna stop there. Ned, that's one of those things that we want to make sure that we get to the, the portion of the meeting where we can really talk about that, um.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Really appreciate it, thank you so much. Do I have any other, uh, questions about something that is not on tonight's agenda? Um, no, okay. Oh, Chris McQ Potts, and I just want to make sure that this is, uh, if you want to bring Chris over? All right, Chris?
Hi, yeah, just a, just a point of order, um, I believe that you are required to close the public hearing and then vote, not vote before closing the public hearing, so I just thought I'd mention that, just as a clarification.
Okay, duly noted, thank you very much.
Yep.
Everybody has things that they can learn. All right, uh, any other questions? Anyone? All right then, thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the regular meeting minutes from October eighth, twenty-twenty. I'm gonna do, uh, our approval of meeting minutes in three, three different batches, just to let you know. Um, so the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes, and the first uh, approval is the regular meeting minutes from October eighth, twenty-twenty, which we postponed from last meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes, October eighth, regular session?
Moved.
All right, Tim, and who's a second? Where do I hear?
May.
Okay, Megan? So I need to go through the roll call again, sorry, this is about remote, uh, Leo Brem?
Aye.
And Tim Knight?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Anime O'Shea Brook?
Aye.
Jessica Riley? Aye, and the motion passes. The next, uh, kind of tranche is, do I hear a motion to approve and retain amended executive session minutes for July sixteenth, July thirtieth, August thirteenth, and August twenty-seventh at the eleven AM session, all of which were in twenty-twenty?
So moved.
All right, and do I hear a second?
Second.
Anime, okay. Uh, so I'm gonna do a roll call, uh, Leo Brem?
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
And Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Anime O'Shea Brook?
Aye.
And Jessica Riley, the motion passes. The next tranche is, do I hear a motion to approve and release the amended executive session minutes from the August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty at five PM executive session and September seventeenth, twenty-twenty executive session meetings?
So moved.
So moved, Tim, and is there a second?
Second, Anime.
All right, thank you, and we'll go through this again, Leo Brem?
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Anime O'Shea Brook?
Aye.
And Jessica Riley, the motion passes. Last one, do I hear a motion to approve and release executive session minutes from March twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, and May sixth, two thousand and nineteen?
So moved.
So moved from Tim, is there a second?
Second, Anime.
All right, and then we will go through the roll call, Leo Brem?
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Anime O'Shea Brook?
Aye.
And Jessica Riley, aye, the motion passes. Thank you for your patience, and thank you out there in TV land for your patience as well. Okay, so the next, uh.
Hey, Jess?
Yes?
Just before we move to the next agenda, and before we forget, is it, um, the, the suggestion that we need to vote on the budget? Now, is that, um, should we do that?
I'm sorry, did, we did vote to accept the budget, and then we accepted to close, right? Or did we not? Did I?
Voted to close, I think.
We did.
We voted on the budget, we approved the budget, then we voted to close, and we approved a, uh, that, I, I just, I'm not, I don't know the rules, I think, um.
We're good.
We're good, yeah, yeah, and honestly, if the hearing is left hanging open, then there's, you know.
I mean, it's something you do once a year, so it's not something that you do all the time. You know, so.
Yeah, we all approved it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if we need to go back and revote it, then we will, we'll take a look at the tape. Okay, so, uh, fiscal year twenty-one budget update. Um, and, uh, just to remind people that when we do the budget update and the school learning model progress, uh, we'll take comments on both of those things after, uh, Dr. Marston's report on the learning progress model. Okay, so do we have an update tonight for the fiscal year twenty-one budget?
So, Ben, I'm sure we don't, this evening, we're gonna have, uh, Michael will have one for the next meeting.
Okay.
And go through where we are in terms of FY twenty-one.
Okay, great, so then, uh, we will move on to, um, the school learning model progress. And I know that there are a lot of things you'd like to talk about.
Yeah, we got a few things there to talk about. Really happy to have our kindergartners back in person. I know I got a chance to visit those classrooms and it was great. Kids were really excited. It was almost like the first day of school over again, doing some of those activities. So all the kids in the class was great. Teachers did a wonderful job. Amazing how well they transform those areas that are not classrooms into very welcoming, warm, inviting educational spaces. So really proud of the work that they did with this as well.
Yeah, I have to say, those were, those pictures you sent to those spaces, I was really surprised on how good they looked, actually. To turn those, to turn those very cold type spaces into something that looks so warm, so.
Yeah, they did, they did a great job. I was really proud of that. And our kids are excited to, you know, we had a couple of busing issues on the first day, but I think we got that straightened out today with a couple of the cohort buses, because we are, we are busing all the kids, but on the days that is not on their cohort, they're on a different bus. So if you're in cohort A, you have your bus you've ridden all year. And on Thursday and Friday, on a different numbered bus. So just kind of getting everyone used to that and making sure that that's the only way that we could, we could transport everybody. So that's, that's working better, I think, today. Hopefully tomorrow's even better. And I think, you know, kids are really happy to be back. It was nice to see them. So we're looking at bringing back our high school special education to four days, like we do with elementary and middle. So that's going to be starting next week. So that'll be a whole other group of kids coming back four days a week. We're excited about that. And then we're looking, we're setting our sights now on first grade. So bringing first grade back in full, the Monday after February vacation. So that's the next kind of, you know, that's the next phase in, we'd bring, we'd bring the first grade in after that, and that would be again, our teachers were extremely creative with some ideas of how this might work and Missy's been working with them and I'm meeting with them next week, but that's our target goal is to start, to start on that day, the Monday after February vacation.
Not to, I hate to interrupt you, but so they're not gonna have to, they're gonna fit them into Memorial somewhere?
Yeah, it's, it's going to be interesting. So stay tuned on that. We don't have the exact. We think we can do it. So that, that's, you know, that's the next phase in there is doing that. And then, you know, I, I think I've, we've talked a lot about what the vaccines might look like, and that's got a lot of press recently. And I just want to be clear from my perspective as superintendent that, you know, when, when teachers are vaccinated and whenever that is, and unfortunately, they got bumped down a little bit this week. But when teachers are vaccinated, I guess it's my expectation as superintendent that we go back full in person at that point, you know. So, you know, we have, we worked backwards on when that date may be, and you know, for, for us as a district, we're looking at setting a target date of April fifth, the Monday after Easter, to, to try to get everyone, start that phase in of everyone, everyone in, because of the point of, of everyone having or the option to be vaccinated, we should be able to try to, you know, get kids back into school. And we know we want kids back in. Everyone want kids, everyone wants the kids back in, and I think if vaccination is available for our teachers, you know, then that would be something that would keep them safe and, and get us back to some sort of normalcy. So I've, as you know, I'm co-Vice President of Tri-County Superintendents. We have a letter that we have written to the governor on behalf of all superintendents in Tri-County that is being sent to them tomorrow, to the governor tomorrow, because we feel like, you know, the, the moving down of teachers, of the disappropriation of prioritization of teachers really wasn't in the best interest of kids. And I met with Denise Garlick, talked to her about it, Sean Dooley as well. So I think that, you know, there's something that we're trying to, you know, shake the trees a little bit to see if we can get some movement on that. But we really want to make sure we, we feel like as school districts that we have the capacity to vaccinate. The commissioner told us yesterday, and, and I guess the frustration we have is there's really no plan for the state. It's just, as you saw with everyone, you know, my dad trying to, seventy-five and over, trying to get on the vaccination list yesterday, it's ridiculous, right? So it's really, it's frustrating for us. There should be a plan for educators so that if you're saying you want all kids in, is what Governor keeps saying. And he's saying, you know, that we should have everyone, no matter what color your community is, and we're yellow again this week, which shocks me, but we are. That you should be, you should be full in person. Well, that's, that's another step forward for us to, to get full in person is to get our teachers vaccinated. We, we signed up for the pool testing, so we'll be doing pool testing of our teachers voluntarily and students voluntarily to give us another data point. So it's not, it's not looking at, you know, oh no, we're gonna find all these asymptomatic people and shut down. No, we're gonna look at what the prevalence really is in our schools. And, and show real data, not just be reactive every time I send an email to parents saying three more kids tested positive. Let's get ahead of it a little bit. Let's do the pool testing and let's see what the prevalence of the virus is in our school and our, in our district. And then we can make some really informed decisions based on that. So again, the vaccination rollout isn't going as well as, as the state had, had planned with us. We hope that it picks up. We've been told that it was going to be trickle, trickle, trickle fire hose. And by the time the teachers are ready to get vaccinated, it's going to be a fire hose and we're gonna do all the teachers and everything's gonna be, be great. That's what Desi has been telling us. That's what they told us again yesterday. So again, it's my expectation that when that happens and the, the second dose and the two weeks after that, we're in full. And I'm looking at April fifth, is that Monday after Easter is the time to do that? It may be the, it may be the twelfth, it may be, I don't know, but we need to have a target there. And I think, you know, the fifth is a reasonable target. So our kids are in for, you know, the month of April, the month of May and half of June. You know, that, that to me is, is a great goal because I, I guess the question I have is, if everyone's vaccinated in April, what difference is April than September, right? So let's get people in. So I, if we can't go in in April, then, then what's the argument of not going in September? It's gotta be, you're vaccinated, we're bringing kids back and we're getting them in. So that's, you know, I just want to kind of put that out there is what, what my expectation is. And I know I've talked to a couple of you about this in terms of what a schedule might look like, but we'll see about second grade after we get first grade in, because if we, we get second grade and we're looking at something where it's only a couple of weeks prior to April, the amount of moving and money to get in for a couple of weeks won't be worth what it would be to get everybody in full in April. So we have to see the timing on second grade, but we're all in on, on kindergarten already and first grade coming up as well.
Jeff.
Jess.
I'm wondering if it would be helpful for us either through an Aspen push or even somewhere on our webpage to put up, you know, either an address, phone number, email of state reps or the governor's office for any of our parents or other people who want their voices to be heard to kind of petition.
Yep.
And bring their, their concerns straight to the source and see if we can get some movement on, especially the vaccination. That was greatly disturbing that that, that fell off this week, but as you say, just a lot of it is stagnant due to the lack of direction coming from exactly that. So Jess, is that something you think maybe we can do or you have any interest in?
Absolutely. I mean, I think that we were gonna try to do kind of a outline of what happened in the meeting as we're trying to kind of expand our communication with people. And we were gonna put a short summary together of the meeting. So we can certainly put those addresses in to that as well.
So I like K and one, and you know, I'm glad to hear you've been thinking about two. At the vaccination, it's like, those are the things we can control and others we can't. And, you know, we, we don't have control over it. But are we looking at or continuing to explore other creative options, you know, all the way through the schools? And even, you know, operationally, whether they're vaccinated is the, gives us the green light or something else. Then we're still gonna have things like driving and dropping off and all the logistical issues that go around with it. So like, how are, you know, what's kind of, how do we look at things like that?
So when all kids come back?
Yeah, yeah, one way or the other, right? I think that's kind of how we, we all have to think about.
So we met with the commissioner yesterday, and, and one of the things that he promised us is that there'll be additional guidance that's going to change things like transportation requirements and, and let us have more than twenty-four kids on a bus. Because that's really critical, right? If we're gonna try to transport students full-time, your point of everyone dropping off would be a disaster, right? That wouldn't be great. We need to, to transport kids on the bus. So there, even if we were looking at at one student per seat, so we're looking at something like forty-two per bus, like that would help us immensely. The twenty-four is so restrictive right now. So that, that, that was hopeful that he said, that he talked to us about, he asked, that the other piece is, is that the new director of the CDC for Mass General helped form the guidance around reopening schools in Massachusetts. She was a really big part of that. So there's some hope that there'll be some guidance coming from CDC that would be more in line with reopening schools, unlike what it is right now with six feet, right? So we're hoping that there's more additional guidance from CDC or at least from Mass DPH that talks a little bit about the safety of coming within six feet and, and what that does for schools, because that's, you know, that's the barrier. I met with five superintendents today. It's the barrier everywhere. So I think we need to CDC comes out with something that will be very, very good for us going forward.
Thanks, Marsden. I actually have a question. Like vaccinations for the teachers. So is the finish line for this kind of when the teachers all get their vaccinations? I know it's not necessarily proven that the vaccine is safe for students yet. So you're saying like April for the end of the year is kind of, I think, what I gathered from what you were saying. So is that just like a hundred percent or whatever, like high percentage of teachers needs to be vaccinated in order for us to go back into like a more in-person model? Is that what you're saying?
I would say that the, to have teachers vaccinated is a really important component to, for us to go back in, in person as an entire district. So I think that's a, in a reasonable expectation that if and when all that happens, and, and some people may choose not to get it. So we have, our nurses have all been vaccinated already, which is great, our school nurses. So that it, it's whether or not people decide that, that they want to have it. But if it's offered and they choose not to get, that's their, that's their right as an individual not to get a vaccine, but my sense is that most teachers will get the vaccine. And, and to me, that's where we can start getting into getting more full in person and even looking at it below six feet as well.
Alright, thank you so much.
Yep, you bet.
You know, just around that conversation too, you know. I think one of the things that's important to, to communicate is that we haven't seen in-school spread here in Medfield, right, between the cases that we've had, right?
That's correct.
It's been community that gets.
Yeah.
Into the school, you know.
And I, and I think that's, you know, that's an attest to the guidelines that we follow and that, you know, from the advice that we've been given and so on. So, you know, and I'm just trying to communicate that, you know, how, how much, how important safety is, you know, and that we do care about our teachers and everything. But let's say the fire hose does open up, is that April fifth date? That can be moved up, correct?
It, it could, I, I, but I think what we have to do is make sure that we have, teachers get two doses and they have the two weeks after them, right? I mean, you gotta, we, we tried to work backwards on when they were supposed to be, the vaccinations were gonna start and then tried to make it, make it fit into that.
Yeah.
I think that's what that's how we tried to approach it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So the, if we're done with that, I'll go into the technology and then I'll, you know, Owen can jump in as well.
Does anybody have any specific thoughts around kind of the re-entry portion of this before we hit technology? Any other thoughts, concerns? Andrew, I do know that the once the vaccine is made available to the general public, I think that most vaccines are safe for what, eight, sixteen and up?
So that qualifies a good amount of the upper level in high school.
Yeah, but you know, it's also entirely possible that that really won't be until, until the summer. You know, that we're really looking at, you know. And then I think there's thirteen and up that they're getting quite close to to approving. But that there's really going to be, and those are really the kind of the high-risk, kind of high spreaders and but, you know, I think that, again, we'll be having this conversation again in September about the general population. You know, how important this did, not just for schools, but for all of us.
I know climate anomaly in the distribution is that people who work in food service, so there are teenagers who are over eighteen who work in food service and are supposedly going to be eligible for that, for the vaccine in phase two in Massachusetts. That's includes myself, which is kind of exciting.
I think that being a bussler is one of the greatest life lessons that anyone could ever, ever have. And a waiter or being a bagger or grocery store clerk.
Yeah.
Should do it if they can.
You don't forget a caddy.
The year you want to have that job.
I actually work in the kitchen at my job, so.
You?
Excellent. I think I made Mrs. Glenn's salad last night, so.
Oh. Great. Okay. Uh, anybody else have any questions specifically about the learning model before we kind of move on to the technology part? Okay.
So, thank you. So just want to kind of frame it, you know, we've been working. Owen's been working around the clock on, on trying to get this fixed and we, we really had a pretty good start to the school year with, with very few issues. And then about a week before we started looking at increasing live streaming, we started to have increased issues just in that building. And Owen's been working real hard on that. So Owen, if you could just kind of take us through, you know, what, what you've done and where we are, and then, you know, our meetings that we've had constantly with our consultants and, and Comcast role and all that kind of stuff. Can you just kind of take us through that?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So it started back the start of January primarily as wifi. So that's what we were hearing, wifi issues, wifi issues, wifi issues. When we looked into that, we determined that it really wasn't wifi and that people were staying connected to the wifi. They just couldn't get out to the internet. So I can see why it would come in as wifi is down. Then we started to notice that sporadically wired computers on the wired networks, so within the middle school, high school, we have essentially two networks. You've got wired and you've got wireless. So we were seeing anomalies occurring on the wired, which prior to that had not been occurring. So we're saying, okay, this is kind of odd. Sort of looking into it, pulling some metrics, looking at logs to see what was going on. And what appeared to be happening was during certain times of the morning, there would be an enormous spike in traffic coming into our network, which would essentially clog the pipe. And so the way I've described it to Jeff and others is it's akin to taking all the traffic on one twenty-eight in rush hour and diverting it down one oh nine. And when you have that volume of traffic in a pipe which can't hold it, obviously you're gonna have a bottleneck, you're gonna have delays. So beyond that, what we started to see, and it got progressively worse, was when the traffic would clog the firewall, it would take upwards of seven and eight minutes for the firewall to recover, which is an exceptionally long period of time, particularly if you're in a class thirty minutes or forty minutes. But if you're in the middle of a lesson and you're down for seven minutes, obviously it's interrupted the whole rhythm of the instruction. So what we started to do with the consultants is we initially started with the firewall. We looked at our current configuration of the firewall, we looked at our rules, we looked at everything that could possibly inhibit the flow of, free flow of traffic in and out. Now again, I, I just have to say that by law, we have to have a firewall and we have to have certain rules in place under the terms of the Child Information Protection Act, which is a federal act that we have to comply with. And after spending a week of doing essentially deep, deep, deep combing through the firewall and its rules, recommendation was made that we get a new firewall. So we said, okay, we took their recommendation, got the new firewall in, copied the file over. We thought this would solve everything. And it didn't. So we then took the action of, okay, let's rebuild the firewall from the ground up, which is essentially recreating every single rule, every single address, every single policy by hand to make sure that everything aligned just as it should and that there wasn't any corruption within the file. When we did that, we saw marked improvement. We thought, yes, this is awesome. Everything is on track. I sent an email to staff, letting them know where we were at. I wasn't expecting these issues to resurface and they did. I wasn't expecting these issues to resurface and they did. At this point, what we started to do is we looked at wifi within this consultancy firm. They have an expert who deals solely in the type of wifi that we have in the district. He went through all the settings and the configuration files, made a couple of recommendations in terms of best practice, did not see any smoking gun that would cause this issue system-wide. Um, so we made those changes. We then went along and we went through every one of our network switches, which are large network devices that routed traffic through. There were probably seventeen or eighteen of them between the middle school and high school. Again, we went through every line of code and configuration on those. So much so that we're at the point where our traffic between different parts of the building and access points is less than one millisecond. So that, that's pretty lightning fast. The point that we're at now is, and to give today is a, a, a very good example, everything was wonderful this morning up until around eleven o'clock. Shortly before eleven, in the matter of, again, probably seventy or eighty milliseconds, not a lot of time, the entire pipe crammed up again. So when we look at our logs from our firewall, we can say, okay, well, what's the usage that's occurring on the school side? Now again, bear in mind that you could have changes in scheduling between different days of the week when the high school may not have as many users as the middle school and vice versa. So we, we've looked at all the scheduling of classes and there is no correlation between when this occurs. So for example, we look at today at eleven o'clock when things died. When we look at the logs in the firewall, we were using less than fifty percent capacity of our internet, of what we're able to deliver with our internet if we were using less than fifty percent. When we speak with our internet service provider, they say to us that, no, you're using a hundred percent. And say, okay, well, can you provide logs to us to show us that that's what you're saying? Because what we're saying is less than fifty percent. So they don't provide logs or they can't provide logs. So what they have agreed to do, they provided us with a second internet pipe today, which we brought online. We already had ordered a second internet pipe from another internet provider, which we also put in today. So at this point, we have three internet pipes servicing the middle school and high school, which in terms of capacity is about two-point-four gigs of bandwidth. Um, before I came on the meeting tonight, we, again, with nobody in the buildings, we saw another series of slowdowns on our initial pipe. Um, even though we had the um, again, I'm being careful here not to mention any vendors' names because I don't want to point a finger at anyone in particular. But the initial vendor that we've been using for many years, even though we had them in place number two tonight and we had one of the new vendors at number one in terms of priority for traffic, our initial vendor's pipe choked up at around six-thirty this evening. There was no zooms occurring in the district or in the middle school or high school at that point. So we are still very much working this problem and trying to determine what our next steps are. Um, tomorrow, what we are going to do is we're going to stress test and over the weekend, we're going to stress test the entire network. And that will involve us simulating, as an example, a hundred and fifty teachers zooming with thirty or forty students attending. What impact does that have on our network? We've already made such changes as removing the ability for people to zoom in uh HD quality and we've brought it down to standard quality. So we've tried to mitigate all our bandwidth consumption. We've limited what people can view in terms of um Google or Amazon Video, Amazon Prime, um Netflix, all streaming services like that, just to see if in fact our bandwidth was being, was running too high and closing things down. So that's where we're at right now. Um, this isn't impacting the elementary schools. Uh, Wheelock Dale and Memorial are not being impacted by this issue. They did have an outage during the week, which I guess was um routed somewhere in New York with files and that's what took things down. And that was a completely separate issue. Um, the issue that we're seeing here at this point, we believe is on the outside of our firewall and is not something that is controllable from the firewall into our network.
Oh, and I think it's a DDoS attack?
That's one of the thoughts that we've had and that we've floated with the vendor.
Um, it's, it's been happening a lot in Massachusetts to other schools.
I know what it is, but.
Yeah, what is that?
I'll, I'll, I'll explain it, but it's been happening a lot in, it's a denial of service attack from, generally from Russia, China, Ukraine. Um, and they've been, they'll pinpoint large networks uh with lots of traffic flow. They'll hop on to find that IP address and they'll start flooding it to, just to bring it down. And they'll do it in the pattern that Owen explained so that um, so that you'll think it's over and then they'll do it again. Um, and over and over again, it's just a, a, a form of attack that when they can't get into your network, they try to just take you down. Uh, they have been targeting schools and it has been happening in Massachusetts. Um, there is a very expensive service you can purchase called DDoS mitigation, but you have to do that through your, your internet provider um and some sort of uh special switching at the, at the higher level. And it's a um generally smaller districts here, don't, don't do that. It's generally something for cities and um really large uh.
They, they talked to us about that today, uh Leo, about that service, but they wouldn't confirm or give us the, the data that, that it was actually a, you know, a DDoS attack. So we weren't gonna sign up for something if we didn't think that's, you know?
It, and it is, and if you have multiple uh egresses to the internet, um, which I, I believe you, you're, you're now utilizing too, you can self-mitigate kind of uh, uh, until it kind of stops. Um, and so for folks who are listening to, I, I happen to be in education technology as well, so, which is why I'm so well-versed. Um, you know, and on the subject. So and it, and then it has been happening to our peer districts around, um, uh, including Westwood. Um, that's had to put in mitigation as well. Uh, Steve Bilet told me today that that had occurred to him. And so it has been happening uh and obviously disrupting everybody's apple cart uh in those school districts.
Happened in Duxbury this week too. Duxbury had to replace their firewall, they're having the same problems that we're having right now.
We've um, we've enabled geo-blocking. So at one point today, we shut down everything around the world other than traffic from the US. Uh, and that's, a- again, it's, it sounds like it's a very comprehensive thing to do, but it's very easy to get around that. It, it doesn't take much to circumnavigate.
I said, they can just, yeah, they could just find a local, yeah.
Yeah, and pop right out. I mean, the unfortunate thing about this is from my desk here, when we're running scans, I can actually predict within like the next ten, fifteen seconds that it's gonna happen because you can just see certain response times begin to falter and waver. And the unfortunate thing about this is, like I say, it happens so quickly. We're talking maybe fifty, sixty, seventy milliseconds from when we see everything going normal to everything being completely, we can't even get into our firewall. And the only way around is to power it down, to free it up, to turn it back up. We, we've taken such measures as even unplugging everything on our network, middle school wifi, high school wifi, internal local area network, to see if the traffic was coming from in-house and flooding it, that we could gain control. It's only when we disconnected from the outside world that we can then get control back over.
So is something Owen or Jeff or Leo, you or anybody else that could uh inform me? Are there any mitigations that we can do on the political level with, again, with our state representatives uh or our state senator around um kind of uh, if these denial service attacks, which we may or may not be experiencing, but it sounds to me like there's certainly some pattern here? Um, are there ways that we can, uh, if it is affecting so much of the education of so many kids, uh, that there are abilities to, first of all, uh, have our internet service providers provide us those logs so that we are able to see what those uh more quickly before we have to spend as much money as we have had to spend to determine that this is the deal? Um, but also then to have the expensive mitigation services that are currently bought through your internet service providers? Are there ways that we can be looking at that as an emergency um intervention at the, at the kind of state and federal level to be able to, to fix that? Because there, I mean, it's not just us. There are millions of kids who are depending on large networks.
Yeah, I'm curious. Owen, do we use Cherry Road or some of, one of the providers for it?
We do uh for E-Rate.
They offer that? Yeah.
They don't.
They don't, yeah. Uh, it's that, and it's because it's, just because of the, the way it's packaged. Um, uh, there's a larger company uh the uh out there that provides internet service to larger companies. They have to have the infrastructure here at One Summer Street in Boston per se. And then at that site, they have to have those routers set up to do that DDoS mitigation, which is essentially shutting down one IP address that belongs to you and putting in another one. Essentially, you're just swapping IP addresses until it goes away. Yeah, and, but you have to have the system do it so fast that the end users don't realize it, right?
It actually, it, it does cause latency. It just doesn't bring your network down. So the, the downside to doing something like this, i- it's not a silver bullet that solves everything. It will keep your network up. But for example, when people go to websites, they'll notice that it's taking longer to get there because their traffic is literally going out to a third party, getting cleaned and washed and then sent on its merry way. And as traffic comes back in, the reverse is happening. So all of that takes time. So um, a- a- again, it's not like we have only one internet source coming in here. We've got multiple, obviously to cover the other buildings too. And we started off loading some traffic to see, you know, if there was ways that we could offset some of this. But clearly we didn't want to bring down Memorial, Wheelock and Dale, which would impact everyone. Um, so you can imagine my surprise when Fios went down two days ago. Kind of get worse.
I thought, you just can't catch a break.
Owen, do you still ask that question? Can it get worse? I mean, we want to ask.
It always gets worse.
Well, certain schools tomorrow can't get worse, right? I mean, that stinks. I know we've worked so hard to get to where we are. I, what I wonder, Owen, so it sounds like, like where's the accountability? Somewhere between, like if we're working with a consulting firm, you know, those are dollars. Do they ever say, hey, you know, what's the escalation or is it, or is it the providers? Um, I know I had main issue, major issues in my house like a month ago. It was very frustrating. They said eventually we can get your house in two weeks. And I kept, it was so frustrating because they told me what they thought it was. And I finally found somebody who made some adjustments and they fixed it. But you know, I mean, do we look, who, where do we, like, do we hold the consulting firm we worked with a little bit accountable?
I think that's what I was talking about in terms of.
Uh, it's Comcast that's the issue right now. I mean, I think they're the ones that we were trying to deal with in, in both. Both Sean Dooley and Denise Scarlett have both reached out to me in the last two days. Um, you know, saying what, what's the deal with Comcast, right? I mean, I think that's the issue um that we're having right now because we have Fios in the other, the other buildings and it, it seems to be a Comcast issue. And I think, you know, Owen had to get a little more stern than he normally does with Comcast here to get them down here and they, they showed up today. So I mean, my sense is that if, you know, if, if, if they didn't think it was something with, on their end, they wouldn't have rushed down as quickly as they did today. So it's definitely something, internally, we're in great shape. It's definitely something on their end that we need to fix.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that, yes.
I mean, I don't mean to be a jerk, but are they coming back tomorrow? If Owen, if you said it just, you know, died tonight?
So um a- again, as I was working with consultants up until just before school committee started this evening, um, we've been configuring those three pipes. So maybe that may have been part of the issue, but we've certainly have been working on it, obviously. And we will be again tomorrow and right over the weekend. They're gonna bring in some equipment tomorrow, uh, tomorrow evening. That'll help us to kind of stress test um to make sure. A- again, we've gone through, as I said, we spent weeks going through the logs, it's configuration files, you name it, to be certain that the issue isn't um an in-house issue. Um, I've given them access to everything. If I was at fault, I would be the first to admit to say, you know what? This is something that I've done wrong and something that I have to own. Um, irrespective of it not being my fault that this is happening, I still have to own it and I still take responsibility for it, that it is happening. Um, so we just have to keep working on it relentlessly until we get the solution, whatever that solution will be. Um, one of the things that we have done obviously is to change all of our external facing IP addresses, which is one of the slight things you can do in a DDoS mitigation. Um, but again, that's not a long-term solution because those IPs can become aware in the public domain and things can happen again quickly, so.
Well, I will say that there is a s- school-level services that are being starting, that will be coming this round for E-Rate that will offer D-D-DDoS as a service for schools. Um, I have seen it, I've heard it from a couple providers. I'm, I'm hoping some of the usual suspects here in Massachusetts will start offering that. Um, like at Cherry Road, so. And when I talk about these providers, these are providers that focus on managing internet uh for schools only. Um, and they go through the E-Rate process to do that. And so there's a handful of them here in New England uh that do that and can, would be the right ones to offer that service so that if something were to happen again, they wouldn't be calling a big Comcast person. It would be calling a smaller shop that focuses just on the schools. And they would have the inside, inside roads to communicate with the Comcast and with the, um, but when it gets to this, it gets, it gets serious and I, and as one, as a peer of Owen's, I, I feel completely bad for him because um I've spent, I've, I've done overnighters trying to figure out what the problem is and you just can't find the pin in the haystack that's causing the problem. So uh, and it sounds like this week it was multiple problems because when Comcast, when you're trying to troubleshoot one problem and something else goes down, that's getting, that looks the same, now you're chasing two ghosts and um that's just very painful. So we appreciate you staying on and off, it's the Owen and um, and I guess, you know, really thank you for continuing to, to beat the, beat it till you've got it figured out, so.
And our, our consultant's been really good, Tim. Just to answer your question, I mean, they've been, they've been really helpful and um they, they, they work with schools all around us. So they, they're, they're a good group.
What's the theory? Um, they try to bring, you know, bring you down. So then Owen, you do something like not use your firewall. Now the cyber criminals can get in. Is, is, is that, like, you, you start acting in desperate measures?
I, I don't believe so. I think it's just they get their kicks out of disruption. Um, it's not like we say a cryptoware attack where there's a monetary gain or there's something in it for them that's, you know, monetary value. I, I think people who are behind some of the, if it is a DDoS attack, you have people who I, I suppose get a sense of satisfaction out of creating viruses and worms that travel and multiply throughout the world rapidly. And then they can turn those devices that they have some degree of control over a- against a network such as ours to our government agency. It happens with government agencies all the time also to bring them down. Um, and I guess it's nothing other than personal satisfaction that they've got the knowledge and how to do that and that they can do it. I just think it's, you know, I, I genuinely feel very badly for all the students and their families and the teachers, the fact that this is going on so long at this point. And the disruption it's causing in an already very, very difficult time, so.
The hackers are home and bored and also there is, you know, conceivably, if this is a, it is disruptive eventually to the economy, to people being able to kind of manage their lives. There is kind of a chaos part to it that, you know, may also be um playing into the motives. But we power on. Thank you, Owen. Very much appreciated and I'm sure we'll hear more about it. And thank you, Leo, for uh explaining that to the rest of us.
Uh, it's extra, it's extra frustrating from a, you know, just from the outside looking in because A, then you're powerless too. But everything that he described is everything that we would have done or I would have done in the same situation. You just have to start pulling parts of the network off to see if something's broken, a bad piece of equipment. Um, it's something that's really odd what can cause really large issues.
Um, on the other hand.
I will, I will publicize them because I don't want kids trying to do the, the simple human things they can do too. I will, I will publicize them because I don't want kids trying to do the simple human things they can do it to.
On the other hand, perhaps through the really unfortunate situation, we have also been able to upgrade equipment that perhaps we would not have had to do at this point, but we have the access to that. And we have been able to make use of our consultants to really kind of go through a lot of the kind of underlying issues that sometimes people have trouble with at the high school. So.
Also, Andrew, I'm sorry that you won't be on using Netflix any longer. So I'm sorry about that. It sounds like Owen blocked it.
Come to my house and like knock out the whole thing.
Okay, just, just one last thing on that. Just to Leo's point, I, I did receive a couple of emails and actually spoke to a couple of parents that, that do this work for Fortune 500 huge companies. And talked to them a little bit about what they thought and just kind of got their sense on it. And, you know, both of them had said the same thing what Leo said, that that's just the, the same way we would have attacked it. The same way that, you know, that we're going to it and the approach that we're using. So that was, that was great. I told Owen, you know, it was, it was great that they, they're doing the same thing, same way. It's not any different than, it's really the way, the way it has to be done in that really strategic linear way to find out what the issue is. And I, I thank those parents. They, they were super helpful and you know, very appreciative of the work and also very positive about it, that it happens in Fortune 500, just we have more money to fix it quicker. So I appreciate that.
Do we have any other information around the learning model right now? Or can I open to public input? Anyone have any other additional questions? All right.
I did have one. Did I hear? I'm sorry. About the vaccinations, Jeff. Did you mention something that our, our staff would be equipped to administer to them? Is that something I heard?
So yeah, our, our nurses have volunteered at the Needham site. Not all of our nurses, but some of them have done that. So we'd be equipped to do it. However, I, I feel like what we were told yesterday, it looks like it's going to be regional sites as of right now. So we're, we're hoping that they would, we're hoping they would allocate it to each school district and we could do it ourselves. But of course, the issues around refrigeration and all that, right? And that's, that's a huge issue. So we're looking at, you know, probably a regional like they're doing a Gillette or other places. So we'll see.
Okay, so. All right. So if there is public input, either on the or just basically on the school learning model, indicate that you would like to do that by raising your hand. And I do see you, David. And we will bring you over by video. And if you could keep your comments to three minutes or less, we'll try to keep this to 15 minutes. Oh, I no longer see David unless you brought him over. Oh, great. Thank you, Owen. You are on it. And also, we can't necessarily answer questions. Although, but we can certainly clarify or make clarifying statements. So I'll, I'll leave that to to you. And let's see. We are also not able to really talk about what our dialogues are right now with the Medfield Teachers Union specifically. So and you're always able to provide feedback to us through our school committee email as well. Okay. So in the meantime, thank you, David, for being as patient as you were. If you'd like to make your comment.
No, I have more of a question. What did you say your primary internet provider was?
Owen, do you, I, I mean, I think we have.
So we have multiple vendors at this point now as of today. The two most common vendors in the ISP market are supplying internet to Blake Middle School and the high school.
Yeah. So who are they? I'm asking, who is it? Is it Comcast? Is it Infinity? Who is it?
Comcast is providing two pipes and Verizon FiOS is providing a third pipe.
So basically two providers, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And you said you reached out to Fortune 500 companies?
Hey, David, if you want to make a specific comment, I, please.
Asking questions, Jess. I'm not making comments. I'm asking questions.
David, I, I mentioned that we have parents that do this work for Fortune 500 companies and reached out to me to offer assistance.
And so, and what was your point about that, Jeff?
My point was that those folks that do that work, they would have attacked the problem the same way that we're doing it. That's what they mentioned to me.
Right. So I may have come in at the tail end of this, but I heard a lot about denial of service attacks. So can you comment on that specifically as to why that's happening at Medfield High School or middle school?
I can take that. It, it can happen anywhere, sir. It can happen to any business. Could happen to any organization. And sometimes DDoS attacks can be short-lived. Sometimes they can be prolonged. We're not saying that it is definitely a DDoS attack. What we are saying that is that it has the signatures, signature marks of possibly a DDoS attack.
Right. But you have, you have security protocols in place, right? That probably tracks some of this. So you, you probably have some sort of artifacts or information that lead you to believe that it is a DDoS attack, right?
Just from the investigations that we have done and examination of the logs, we can confidently state that the issue is not occurring within the network or because of any misconfigured devices within the network or any underperforming devices within the network. What we can say is that the issue that is impacting the students and the staff is something that's coming from outside the network in waves. That has a signature of possibly a DDoS attack, possibly some kind of flood. The reason why that's occurring, I cannot answer.
Okay. And Jeff.
I'm sorry, David. I think I'm going to have to.
You're going to cut me off, Jess? You're going to cut me off? You do that. No, before you do that, because you've cut me off once before. I want to ask Jeff, Jeff, you speak to other superintendents. Is this going on in other schools?
Yeah, I mean, actually, David, I mentioned that maybe you weren't on, but I know what's happening at Ducksbury right now. And I, and Leo had mentioned it happened in Westwood as well.
Okay. So my recommendation would be put that out, let everyone know. Because right now you've got a lot of people that are very, very upset and don't understand. And when you kind of gloss over it superficially, and I only came in at the tail end of this and to me. It was pretty superficial. That's how it's going to come across.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Dave. We did talk about it a while though. So you came at the, at the tail end, but I appreciate that feedback.
Okay, let's move on. Thank you, David, for your comment and very much appreciate it. So does anybody else have any other comments or questions about, or I'm sorry, just comments about the school learning model? We are trying to get kids in. We do have a date set. We are certainly hoping that vaccines come through. And.
Sorry, I missed that day.
Move on. We're shooting for April 5th. We're hoping that we get to the vaccination part of this, but that was really where we were able to kind of build it back from. Okay. All right. So in the interest of time and moving on to new business, I'm going to move on. Under new business, we are getting to the school year 21, 22 school calendar. Dr. Marsden, would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So in, in your package, your materials, you have a draft. It's our first pass at it. We haven't really sat down as a leadership team to insert a lot of the, the days. It's really looking at our, our 1920 calendar and instead of the, the 2021 and looking for those dates and try to insert the, the holidays and that kind of thing. But we're looking at beginning on September 1st and Labor Day being late again this year on the, on the 7th. So getting those first couple of days in like we, we have in, in years past. And then we're just going to go through and look at, at some of the professional development and other days that are in there. So I just wanted you to take a look at that first pass. Certainly give you some feedback over the next couple of weeks. I'm going to meet with leadership and we'll bring you a second pass. So you can take a look at that and see what you think. But typically we voted in, you know, February, March or whatever. So I want to just get ahead of it a little bit and put it in your packet.
Quick question, please. Is, are, are there, and I know you said you haven't met with leadership yet. But in terms of lessons learned from, from this year and things, perhaps, you know, Wednesday's half day for PD or, or something, I'm, I'm wondering if that is under consideration at all.
Like, you know, using like the Newton model where they have a half day every week kind of? Something that we've, we've talked about in the past. I know that I'm sure everyone would. The, the teachers would certainly like that as well. We haven't really talked about that at all. But I know if you don't know what anime is talking about, there are many, not many, but there are a lot of communities that have had professional development every week, a half day a week for a long time. I know Leo, you worked in Newton.
Yeah, I was K5. I'm a K5. It was only K, only K5 though, that they could do it in. And it was Tuesdays, you know, Tuesday after day. As a team leader, it was great for planning PD and getting meetings together, that's for sure. But I'm, I was very shocked by it because I didn't know how convenient it was for parents and whatnot.
Yeah, anime, we haven't talked about that, but I'll definitely bring that up with them. And we can look at whatever you guys think in terms of the calendar, you know, at the next meeting. Second, bring a second draft through.
All right. Any other comments around that? And is there any, anybody from a, okay, is there any public input around the first draft of the calendar? And certainly that is something that if you don't want to say it tonight, you can certainly email us at the scchair@emailmedfield.net address. Okay, not seeing any. Mary Brule is enormously patient. And she is here to present the school admissions policy review. And, and I'll have the subcommittee also pipe in as well.
Hey, Mary.
Hi, everyone. Thank you very much for bringing me over. And thanks very much for giving the time tonight for this. As most of you are kind of already know, we updated the educational stability policies this past year, trying to look, or this past fall, trying to really look at some of our vulnerable populations and making sure that they had the supports necessary within the district. This included foster care, homelessness, as well as military and migrant families. And looking at this, we also have realized that we want to update the admissions policy so that it reflects some of the things that we need to do for students that are, are in the educational stability categories as well. So in your packet, you'll see some of the updates. It was a relatively short policy previously. In the beginning, we just added in that while there is a need for every student that's seeking admission to provide proof age acceptable to the principal, proof of vaccination and immunizations as required by the state and school committee, proof of residency, et cetera. We added in that unless there is a legally required exemption to the policy, such as for homelessness or foster care students. We also wanted to make sure that for homeless students who are temporarily residing within the district, the district will enroll the student immediately. This is something that is required. But we wanted to make sure that it was within the policies and evident to all as well. Even if they don't have the records that are required, we do have an obligation to immediately enroll them. For foster care students that are residing in the district, it's also in the best interest of the student to leave the school of origin and enroll in our district. The district will enroll the student immediately again without waiting to receive all the typical enrollment forms. And the district will immediately contact the child's school and district of origin to obtain the relevant records and documentation. And they'll work with DCF to provide a notice of LEA, which is the local educational agency form that indicates that the student is in foster care along the state agency. And then the kind of final aspect that we added into it was really just trying to say that for students that don't have, that need alternative means to provide enrollment paperwork because sometimes these families don't have access to email or mail. They can't physically come to the district to pick up the forms. That the district will just try to use any kind of additional means, really trying to make sure that we reach out and are able to help these students to get into school and get in with as seamless of a transition as possible. And that means that this might be that we are going to have the parents complete the forms verbally over the phone, that we might be delivering the forms to them in person, wherever they might be. But really just trying to look at the needs of the students and making sure that we are supporting them. The other aspect that we changed, that's in the school admissions policy. You'll see also in your packets that we updated the school admissions purpose and construction part portion that looks at just adding in two more protected categories. We had updated all of our protected categories in most of the policies, but recognized that we did not have sexual orientation and gender identity within this policy. So we did add that in as well. So any questions or concerns or kind of thoughts on any of this? It's really trying to look at some of the more vulnerable populations and just making sure that as a district, we are there to support them. And we are there to make their process of enrolling as, as easy as possible.
And again, this is one of those kind of mandated policies in which we have very kind of, very little wiggle room. Not that we want any, but it's not something that we need to run intensively through our subcommittee because it's really essentially mandated. So.
Yes, yes. So it is something that's required by both federal and state. And so we have to make sure that we are making all kind of supports for students in this way. And, you know, at this time, we did not have kind of published exactly how we would do it. So it is something that will support students moving forward in a more holistic way as well.
Megan, Tim, do you have any questions? No? Okay. I would actually, one thing I'd like to think about, and it's not emergent in the next, you know, couple of sessions. But given that we had to redo ours, kind of Title IX policies and now many, I'm just kind of interested in knowing how the executive orders that have been signed rescinding many of the executive orders that happened, how that's going to kind of play ping pong with, with policies at all. But we don't have to have that discussion now at all. It's late and.
My guess is I'll be back. My guess is I'll be back shortly. Probably round about nine 30 again.
I'm working on it, man. I'm trying.
I hope so. I count on you all for that.
Does anybody have any public comment or now that I've offered it to the committee, do we have any public comment on that first reading of the school admissions policy review? We'll probably bring that back next time with additional thoughts and. Anyone? No? Okay. Wow. Bing, boom. All right. Thank you, Mary. Appreciate it. Good night. All right. Do we have any other items in new business since posting on January 26, 2021?
Do not, Madam Chair.
All right. Well, then we are moving on to old business, which is the Dale Street Project. Dr. Marsden, Leo, or Anna May? Are there, is there anything that you would like to?
Whoever wants to go first. I, I can go first or you guys, whatever you like.
Go ahead, Jeff. Because we actually have something fun to report. So.
We had our FAS meeting with MSBA, which we presented. They looked at our, our PSR and it was a very, 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 very positive meeting. You know, when, I was a little disappointed in the patch article because I don't think it reflected the actual tenor and tone of that meeting. I think when, you know, when you have a member of MSBA saying to the district that our education plan that we wrote should be a model for all districts building and educating, building elementary school. I think that's a pretty important thing to kind of highlight, right? So that's, that was something that was, was really impressive from them. I just, I can't, you know, I can't thank enough Steve Brennan for his help with that. Our department chairs that worked real hard to contribute to that, our teachers, all the information that we got from the community forums. You know, so it was a really super positive meeting. And if you were a part of that meeting and you watched the school. And if you were a part of that meeting and you watched the school district before and the school district after, um, you would know how positive that meeting was. And, and our, our architects, uh, let us know that they have never had a FAS meeting so positive that they weren't, uh, a million questions. And, um, I just felt really great about it and everyone else. I know Leo, you were there, um, Jesse, you were there. I mean, just really positive about it. So, um, I just want to make sure that kind of record gets straightened out, that that was really the, the theme and the, and what really happened at the meeting. And, uh, it was just a good, good MSBA meeting for Medfield. And I think that needs to be reflected off for the record.
Yeah, I think so too. Now, uh, we probably ought to talk about this, uh, this, uh, uh, model school thoughts. Because I know that the model school kind of, uh, came up as kind of a Johnny come lately because it was posited as a cost-saving measure. And that the MSBA at one point had, uh, incentives for model schools.
They've removed all the.
To honor that, we did actually, uh, pursue kind of an understanding around model schools and whether they would be, uh, something that it would be, um, to our advantage, uh, or recommended for us to kind of, that they would, uh, be better for our educational plan than the building that we have designed, uh, specifically to our general situation. So I think that we probably ought to have a bit of a discussion around the model school issue, because clearly it's something that's very important to the town to explore those cost issues. And I wonder if anybody would be interested in kind of broaching that. Leo?
Just around the model school program itself?
Well, I mean, around that we, that the FAS, you know, uh, they, the educational plan was clearly that they were very encouraged and, uh, that the state itself, the MSBA, was obviously so positive on the kind of PSR that we're, we're looking at. Um, but that when then, when he again had to bring in, uh, kind of the model school idea. And I think that the, the way that came about was that, um,
Yes, so.
Our town, our assistant town administrator had said that several years ago, he had been able to save some money for another district that he had worked with, uh, through the model school program. They are still there, but there aren't really any incentives, incentives at this point to working with, uh, the MSBA used to give you incentives to, to work.
Correct. It would give you, it would give you a more, a few more points, uh, on there. So my comment around it and the caution that they, that they have around the model schools is that we've designed a plan and you'd have to see if one of the model schools fits your educational plan. Um, you know, in so many words, there are other factors too that, that you have to take into consideration is that there are set, uh, architects and construction folks who, uh, execute those plans, um, and they have other jobs, right? So, um, so in that process as well, we would have to explore availability and, um, you know, and, and awarding such a, um, you know, such a plan. So there's exploration to be done. Uh, I think it's worthwhile to make sure that every, um, you know, for the, our fiscal responsibility to the town, uh, to see if every, every dollar can be saved. But there was a, there was a shift away from like, of the pushing on the mo, on the model schools. No one's really thrown it under the bus in particular. At first people just said, oh, everyone's schools will look the same. But that's not quite the case. Cause we did look at them, you know, in Newton and we looked at them and, um, in Sharon as well. But, uh, overall, you know, it's worth the exploration, uh, to see if a model school could fit our need. Uh, you know, and, and in fact, we can, um, you know, find any savings in there because of, construction costs are construction costs too, right? And so the cost of the material is not going to be any different.
Mike, what I'm hearing from you though, Leo, is that I'm hearing from you very much, uh, and, and which I've just asked for, is a perspective from, uh, the kind of school building committee and fiscal side of construction. But our responsibility is really looking at the best interests of the educational plan.
So that's the exploration we're engaged in.
Right? Like this is essentially an economic question, which is not, uh, which first of all, it, we don't have enough information to know if it would cost us less and if that, it could potentially though, slow down the project. Is that correct?
Yes, it could.
Very much. Yeah, because, and we would essentially, to some extent economically have, uh, kind of wasted a certain portion of the money that we.
Yes.
You know, like, I mean, we're kind of throwing.
We already.
Out the window anyway. So, and so those are the fiscal questions, but truly in terms of econo, in terms of the educational plan, what we have right now is a building that fits our needs and fits the unique needs of our district. And one of the interesting things that I was hearing in the FAS meeting was that, uh, they, you know, the, the MSBA had identified five buildings. But each one of them was like, and if you knock off the top of this and, you know, or if you kind of change that, or if it's a little like this, and knowing that the MSBA does not pay for siting costs in general, and we already have a building that is built to, to essentially honor the site, the heights, the kind of.
Yeah.
Need for outdoor space. It seems to me that educationally, to be saying I would really like to wear, and cram my foot into a secondhand shoe that's a size too small. Makes sense to me.
I will say that you, to that point.
That's a little bit of a metaphor that may not be fully informed, but to that point, I really feel like that we have a bespoke, um, kind of building that has been built and considered within the place and within our community. So as a school committee, and I'm very happy to hear any of your opinions about this, but as a school committee, if our responsibility is looking at the educational plan and what would be best for the educational plan, um, I'm not sure, aside from the economics, which again is not our mission in this particular, and we have already made significant kind of concessions to by only doing four or five, right, by only recommending four or five. I just feel like we need to have a little bit of a conversation about it and hear other people's opinions, because I do know that there's a, a meeting of the selectmen and, uh, the SBC next week that, uh, has been publicized that, that we're attending. But we, that was actually a, a misprint at one point, so.
Theo and I are attending as.
Yes. You are attending as your members of the SBC.
Feedback in terms of the ed plan. You know what? I'm, because I did not attend that, um, January twentieth meeting. I, I'd love to know your input, Jeff, and what you think about the, the model school options in terms of complementing or not complementing our ed plan.
Sure. I mean, I'd love to. I, I think one of the things that came out of the FAS meeting, and I, I heard it loud and clear, which, um, I, I think really speaks volumes to the work that all of us have done in the last couple of years on this, is the, the echoing of the education plan and the building are aligned, right? And, and that's what the goal is for MSBA. The goal of MSBA is that you design an ed plan through that community input, through the input from your teachers, and then you do that whole ed plan piece. And then the architects build and design that building around what you educationally want. And I think that's what was accomplished in the last couple of years of, of doing all that work and getting that design to the PSR phase. And, and I feel a little bit like the model school program is trying to, trying to fit your education plan into their model school, right? Which is not the way that MSBA wants you to do that. They want you to design an ed plan, uh, write an ed plan, your vision of what it should look like as an elementary school. And then will you have your architect design that, not the other way around? And I feel like the, the model plans, the model school does that. Now, that being said, the model schools, um, at the high school level are, are vastly different than the model schools at the elementary. So the high school model schools, whether it be Knowett High School, Natick High School, Franklin High School, or the original Whitman Hansen, which really started it all. That, that's those, Franklin High School is another one. You know, those are, those are incredible buildings, well-designed. Um, and, and they make a lot of sense because high schools cost a fortune compared to elementary schools. Elementary schools aren't cheap, but they're a fraction of the cost of a high school. So when I looked at, and, and I'm looking at some of them over the weekend in preparation for that meeting, but Steve and I, Michael, looked at, uh, some of the, the floor plans and the, and the plans for these model schools. Now, Mike, one of my children attended one of the model schools. So we have one right in Norfolk. I've been inside that before and I know what that looks like. I know that that doesn't really fit our educational plan, um, in that design based on how we, our vision of neighborhoods and neighborhood learning areas and, um, how we want to structure our library of media and our music and our gymnasium. None of that, none of that fits into what that model looks like. Uh, when you look at Bancroft School, um, that's another one. I think Estherbrook and Lexington is the other one. We looked at those, you know, they had their, their positive pieces, but they didn't fit in what our vision was. They didn't have that, that core concept of, of having neighborhood learning centers, having breakout rooms for, um, for small group learning, small group instruction. They didn't have a lot of the, the same number of STEM, STEM or STEAM like, like we wanted. And we, we looked at the music areas weren't like what we, where we want to design. The cafeteria cafetoriums were not like we would design. The gymnasiums were undersized. I mean, that's, and that's feedback we got from the community through those visioning sessions of priorities that people wanted. So even beyond just what we need for the instruction and learning, but for making this, uh, a, a building that folks can use seven days a week for anything that they want, the community-based. They, our, our plan doesn't fit into those buildings as I see it right now. And I, and again, I got to look at it, at two other ones. I've more looked at three of them so far. But, you know, firsthand of going into the Freeman Kennedy in, in Norfolk, it's, it's not what we're looking for. It just isn't.
That gym is tiny. That gym is tiny. I, I, there is no way that's going to fit what we need here, you know, for, because don't forget, our schools don't only get used six and a half hours a day by our kids, a hundred and eighty days. They get, our schools get used for all kinds of other things and parks and rec and, uh, uh, other services. So, you know, taking those into consideration, um, you're going to want to have a good service. Otherwise you can't use it for those things, uh, as well.
And there's a couple of things that, you know, getting back to the financial piece that Jess was talking about, and I know that you guys talked about before too. There's a reason why only one community in the last, you know, five, six, seven years has done a model school with the elementary level, right? There's, it's, it, the incentive points are taken away, so you're not saving money there. Um, I know Mike Quinlan, who does this work for a living, um, has asked for the information, uh, from the, the Marlboro School, which is the last one, to kind of look at the cost analysis. Because I think it's, it's a good exercise, right? We should look at, do our due diligence and make sure that if we can save money, we can save money. I mean, that makes total sense. Yeah, Mike really hasn't got any of that information from them. He's trying to get that information. You know, some of the cost savings was, was, had nothing to do with the model school and that project. It was more about, you know, not having a bridge over wetlands and some other things there. So there's, again, there's always the devils in the details of some of this stuff, right? And we try to see exactly where the savings is. And, and, and again, Mike, Mike is totally committed to this and, and does this for a living and knows, you know, what, where the costs are and, and, and what the market was at that time. And those are some of the reasons why there was a savings, not so much the model school. So, um, you know, I think that if we're looking at educationally, we should be building a school that the community has, and teachers have said that this is what their vision, this is what they like, and this is what they want for kids, right? This is what they're looking for, not spending a whole year and a half developing that vision and then trying to fit it into some model school that might be a little bit cheaper.
It would have much quicker just to put those plans on the wall and have those people just pick one. If people were going to do that.
Could do that, exactly. You know, I just think that, um, you know, I need to do a little bit more on it, but my initial, uh, reaction to the ones I've looked at don't support our, our education plan.
Jess, the other thing, I think the term, the, the takeaway term too, is trying to jam your foot into us, uh, you know, your shoe, your size three, whatever you mentioned. You know, and I think that's a good example.
I like that.
Oh. So, um, but to Jeff's point, uh, as well, is the, um, when you're, when you're planning a building, the building has been designed around the site, right? To ensure that maximize use of the space on the land itself, to preserve as much of the surroundings and the open areas that we have and to complement the other building that's also on the site, right? So, um, that, those considerations get thrown out when you're going with a model school. You have to try to take like a, you know, a block and try to fit it in the right way. Um, and so, and that's the other drawback, right? And as much as, you know, I believe in fiscal responsibility, but at the same time, our community is going to have to, this is going to be a part of our community for the next seventy-five years.
Right. We don't.
Right?
Yeah, we don't turn over schools very often.
Right. So, I mean, and that, and to me, that's, you know, and we've already, we've already shrunk it a little bit. Um, you know, and I, I feel like with the space crunching issues that we're having, you know, even with this pandemic, um, you know, I think the, you know, the memorial building project was a little short-sighted and not building the bigger project because our space issues have, will compound. So I think taking into the, right back with, and we went to MSBA, the first thing they said is build this building for fifty years so that it can be used fifty years from now. It's, they kept on saying that over and over again. And, and it's so true, right? I mean, because Dale Street is how old, right? Uh, and so this building, we want to build a building that's going to be viable for this, this, this district, you know, sixty years from now, fifty years from now. So.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think at Megan or, uh, Tim?
Sorry, yeah, I was going to ask, sorry, is I'm muted? Um, just procedurally, at what point do they say, okay, we've done the analysis? You know, and like, at what point do the, um, do we say, okay, we're, we're, you know, like, we have enough information to make a decision? I don't, I don't think it's ours. It's more the Dale Street.
It's not ours.
I know that, I understand. I'm more just curious as to what, you know, like, how long does, uh, evaluation continue? And is there any kind of a timeframe when it's?
Yeah, the timeline. Yeah, I'm not exactly sure of the next, the next timeline, Jeff. Is that the selectmen?
I know they're going to have a conversation at the next SBC about it and it's on the agenda. So I'm not sure. I, I know they're going to have, um, kind of like we're doing, talking about the ability of, of the model school, so.
Yeah, we're going to have that deep dive next Wednesday.
Yeah.
You know, at seven. So I invite people to attend. And also on Monday, um, February first, we're having the Wheelock Neighborhood Traffic Public Forum where we're, um, going to analyze the data behind, um, the questionnaire that was taken. And, um, I believe the Chief of Police and, um, Mo from the DPW will be there in attendance as well as the traffic engineer. So, um, that'll be an important meeting. And Megan Sullivan from the Sustainability Subcommittee, um, they've, um, selected a date. So February twenty-fifth, the Sustainability Subcommittee will have a public forum as well. Just three important dates coming up around the Dale Streets project.
Never a shortage of meetings in Medfield, if that happens to be your hobby.
Jess, just to weigh in, um, admittedly, you know, I'm not part of the, um, building committee like, uh, Anna May and Leo. But listening to the points that Dr. Marsden and Leo have made, um, I'm fully, I, I, I understand what they're saying about, um, it taking around a year and a half to develop the educational plan with all of the input and, um, the difficulties therein of trying to stuff that into a, a pre-existing model of a school as well as on the site in which it was supposed to be built. So, um, I understand that it, we need to do the due diligence and let it run its course. So I guess that's all I have to say about that.
Yeah. And I do believe that, but I, I also felt that it was very important ahead of this discussion that the Select Board and, um, the SBC are going to have next week that, you know, Anna May, you and, and Leo could take kind of what we're talking about here to them with some feeling of authority that, that you know kind of generally how we might feel about this in terms of how it fits with an educational plan. So, right. Okay, do I have any public comment on the Dale Street project right now, aside from that particular discussion? All right, Chris McQ Potts, if you'd like to be brought over. All right, Chris McQ Potts, if you'd like to be brought over.
Hi, yep. So just a couple of quick comments. So I think it's not a true statement to say that the community and teachers have were engaged in the development of the educational plan because I'd like to know what percentage of the teachers, what percentage of parents and what percentage of community members actually were actively engaged in the development of that educational plan because it was not a large percentage. And in fact, the community has said where they would like the school to be, and that has been disregarded. I also think that it's really important with regard to sort of dismissing or, you know, mentioning the fact that we have this, you know, $3 million in free cash and why can't we tap into that? When we actually need that free cash to make sure that our bond rating is strong enough so that we can actually borrow the money for the Dale Street project. So you can't always have it. You can't always have it both ways.
Madam Chair, I I never said we dip into to the 3.3.
Well, I will go back and I will, I'm sure that anybody that was listening to that from the town side would question the way that comment was made.
So let's focus.
Just don't, please don't put words in my mouth. I did not say that. I said there was.
All I'm saying is you can't, you cannot have it both ways with regard to you know, questioning the town budget and this $3 million in free cash and then turning around and expecting that there's going to be a strong bond rating in order for us to borrow for the Dale Street School.
Okay, well.
You cannot, you can't have it.
Chris? Next comment you have, so it was about the bond rating and your concern about free cash and that you.
Madam Chair, if you would just listen to me through my whole comment and not interrupt my public input, that would be appreciated.
All right, and you would prefer not to be interrupted. I know we all, we all do feel like that way sometimes. Okay, anything else, Chris?
Nope, that's it.
All right, thank you so much. Okay. The next, I don't have any other public comments. Okay. So the next is informational items. Anyone? Did we want to have or Dr. Marston, actually, first, did you want to speak to the conversation that you and I had with Stephen Rush this week at the BOH? We had a brief conversation with the BOH around kind of how we might think about collaborating going forward in terms of health and safety to get our kids back into school and to make sure that everybody is safe. So and we'll kind of conversations out, but.
Yeah, I think I think it's really good. It paints a very good image to have the to make sure that we're in lockstep with what the BOH is saying as well, because obviously we have, we have some really big, good experts on there that, and I know Jess has been talking with them. But just so that as we're going into this vaccination process and everything else, that, you know, people are hearing that, you know, a similar message or a constant message from both boards, and I think that's just important.
Yeah, and then I think that we all understand our roles within that decision-making process too.
Right.
Yeah. So any other informational items? Andrew, would you, you single most patient person in the year of a pandemic, any informational items or things that you would like to? I do think that you get kudos for having to sit through the longest meetings
Yes.
that any student rep has ever had to sit through.
Any other way, so I guess this is more for me. Comments right now, the only thing I, just that presentation that I'm going to update for the next meeting.
Okay, great. Yeah, and that's on kind of your experience right now around the student learning models and great. Anyone else? Any other informational messages?
Just, well, sorry, I know we want to wrap up, but I just want to say kudos to the two high schoolers who started Active Minds and the the bandana project. I'm just, ah, it's so beautiful. I think it was, is it Megan Bannister and Catherine Waters, Andrew? And just to, you know, start to tear down the stigma of mental health and kids all, I think they're giving out green, green headbands, right, to be an.
Actually, very successful campaign. I actually just took mine off my backpack. But yeah, I I would say like 90% of the people at school were wearing the green bandanas, which was pretty awesome.
I know. I just love it. I mean, I ordered one from Etsy just to put on my little work bag. I'm I'm an ally, you know, so I think it's a beautiful project and I think it's just, it is just going to hopefully lift some folks that desperately need it. So kudos to those.
Yeah, I'll pass it along. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thanks for my salad, Andrew. It was good. It's worth getting a vaccine.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, anyone else at this point?
No, I would just say almost a follow-up to to some of that though, in Anime, I think it was Anime, but they had the first SEL meeting. It was two weeks ago. And it was, it was refreshing, you know, just they broke us up into groups and it was, it was fun to be there with some of the parents, teachers and students, you know, really kind of a community focused on betterment. You know, what are some of the little things we can do? Some, some interesting ideas came out of it, you know, so talking back to Jeff, that SEL Task Force is all, is always great and I look forward to some of the follow-up. But it was, it was amazing. I saw it in in 20 or 25 minutes, you know, just momentum started to drive. And, you know, some of those are the, those are the nicer, all meetings are there's always great things that come out of it, but that was, that was a, that was a highlight for that, that week at least. So I'm glad to see that up and running again.
Me too. Okay. So we are looking at future agenda items, which are the SEL, SEL Task Force remarkably at the next meeting and Dr. Worthley will be doing that. Looking at the standards-based report card feedback in March, March 11th meeting with Dr. Powers. And Anime will be working on a student feedback agenda item. We can decide between the two of us what you would like to do with that, either in February or March, and figure out where that fits best in in the agenda for you. Okay?
Here, can we please add the bus fee discussion to that agenda list?
Absolutely. We'll put that within a kind of budget considerations. How does that sound, Jeff? As we're talking about fiscal year '22 kind of updates.
And would you like us to to do a a projection for February 11th to give you a sense of what it would look like if we did do it?
Can you look at it from a couple of different scenarios?
Sure.
Yeah, that would be really.
We'll look at what the, I know we did this a few years ago when we talked about this last time. Excuse me, we got the, the average for surrounding areas that are charging bus fees. And we put that on a, on a scale and then we, we picked the this, the average and then, you know, we allocated that based on what we're going to do a a seven through 12 or K to six, and we tried to figure out what that might be. So we could do that for the 11th, that will at least, at least start the conversation where we need to be.
And also, part of that, and I'm not trying to wiggle out of it, but part of that is also labor and time costs about what that would cost to administrate as well. And clearly, the central office is straight out almost all the time during the best of times. So, you know, kind of making it more difficult for us to do our jobs for a payout. I don't know, because I don't know the figures at this point, but we should always be thinking about that as well. Anything, any, okay. Oh, also, do we need to do that with technology fees if we were even batting around? Okay, that doesn't mean we're doing a technology fee, doesn't mean we're doing a bus fee, it's just we need to know the information. We can't make responsible decisions without it, so.
Correct.
All right, our next meeting is on February 11th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Leo, would you like the second?
No, I just had a question.
Oh, well, we can, procedurally, do we feel okay about that, committee, if Leo has a question here?
You can just table the motion, yeah.
All right.
I think, I think you'd have to.
I think we're just getting going. I mean, I hope it's a big discussion item, Leo.
It's not, actually. I just wanted to confirm that.
Please do not let the other 17 people are here.
Is it still February 10th?
February 10th, yes.
February 10th, okay. And the question I had, K and one will be a half day on those days as well?
Yes.
In person, cool. Awesome. That's, I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
So moved, Anime. And Leo's and Tim's getting punchy. I'm going to do a roll call, please.
Tim wanted to go on.
I was kidding.
All right, so Leo, Bren and Tim Knight.
Hi.
Megan Glenn.
Hi.
Anime O'Shea Brook.
Hi.
And Jessica Riley, aye. Good night, 10:03 PM.
Thanks, everybody.